Agents. Okay, before we get into our scheduled agenda here, we would like to take the opportunity to invite any public comment on topics that are not on the agenda, or if anyone is not going to be able to stay for the whole agenda and has something they'd like to say, please feel free to come to the mic, state who you are and where you live, and so the mic's open. Okay, so no public comments, so we'll move forward with our first item, which is an A&R for board endorsement from Vito in Virginia, Pete Carrillo, 205 Sunset Lane.
Is this the one we looked at together?
It is. It's the division of the two lots. We've gotten all of our reports back with no issue.
Okay, so we just sign away?
That is correct.
All right. Can we do that now? Can we do that at the end of the meeting?
We still have a few minutes before the public hearing, so.
What's that?
We got the date?
Oh, shoot.
Signatures. Sitting out over here with all your signatures.
You don't write too much other stuff.
I don't think I'll stick to them.
She's opening the public hearing. The members, there can be problems if you open it for King Combs.
No.
As long as he's here for the hearing, he shows up.
You have enough to vote.
But you all have to vote together.
Right.
Okay, it is 6:35, so I'm going to begin the process of opening the public hearing. It's a Town of Lunenburg Public Hearing. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 9th, 2015, 6:35 PM, Joseph Blata Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, to amend the protective bylaw of the Town of Lunenburg by adding to Section 4.0 Use Regulations a new section entitled Section 4.17 Village Center District Bylaw. To add to Section 3.1 entitled Types of Districts, a new subsection 3.1.O. to read as follows: Village Center District. In Section 3.2.1, we will delete the words "May 3rd, 2008" and substitute the words "May 2nd, 2015." That's to go along with the update of the town zoning map. To amend Section 4.16... Oh, that's for the... That's... Oh, sorry. "To amend Section 4.16 Registered Marijuana Dispensaries to correct numbering sequence and to amend the zoning map to include the Village Center District. Copies are on file in the planning office. Notice of said hearing will be duly posted in the usual posting places." Entertain a motion to open the public hearing on these topics.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so I'll introduce the members of the board. On the far end of the table here is Matthew Allison. To my immediate left is Damon McQuade. I'm Nathan Lockwood, the vice chair and acting chair tonight. To my right is Adam Burney, the land director for Town of Lunenburg. And in the far right of the table is Marjorie Bogio, the administrative assistant for the planning director. Okay. So, okay, so... The... How would we like to proceed with the public... Are we going to...
I feel like we should take them in an order and move through them in the order that they're listed in the ad. So you would take...
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you, Marjorie.
So I would start with the Village District, and then everything else builds off of that.
All right. So we'll open our meeting with a discussion of the Village Center District, which is, as mentioned here, is going to be added to Section 4.1... Sorry, 4.17 of the town's bylaws. Does anyone on the board have anything they would like to say with regard to the Village Center District tonight?
I think we've gone over it pretty well, and it looks pretty well put together.
Damon?
Reed, I think this is a really good opportunity for the town to bring back some life to our town center, reestablish the sense of community, get people spending time in the center of town, appreciating its historic character, and making us a stronger community in general.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. To that point, I think that's... Really glad you brought that up. Would you like to just read the preamble, maybe? Just a... A lot of the people in the room tonight have heard it before, but I think if people are tuning in on the TV or online, I think it's a good opportunity, even if we don't... Even though we're probably not going to read the entire text of the document today, or do you suggest that we go through the entire text?
No, I would suggest that we, in the interest of not being here until tomorrow...
Yeah.
Keeping at least some of the people watching at home interested.
Yes. So we'll read the preamble, just so that if you're tuning in for the first time, you can get a sense of what the town is trying to accomplish through this change to the bylaws.
Through the chair.
And the purpose as well, that'd be great.
Through the chair. I'd also suggest that the bylaw is on the town's website under the Planning Board. So if someone is at home and is watching and is curious, they can access it there.
Excellent, yeah, thanks for mentioning that, that's a great point. All right, Damon.
Oh, me, okay. So, "The preamble of the Village Center District, Lunenburg Town Center Region, has a tremendous importance in symbolizing the unique character and heritage of Lunenburg. As residents engage with the historic buildings and streetscape of this area in the course of their routine daily business, it should be related, recreational, commercial, or even just driving through. The experience greatly reinforces a profound bond with the town's present community and past heritage. There is an opportunity to significantly improve the quality that is already poignant civic experience and increase the number of people who will be drawn to share it, share in it by expanding the businesses and other attractions in the area. There is also a key challenge to preserving this critical embodiment of our town. Appropriate new uses or remedies must be found to the increasing number of underutilized buildings located in the town center. The town planning experience and best practices are exemplified in the state's model bylaw for Village Center Districts, demonstrates some key ingredients to sustaining and enriching this type of environment in small towns. Of these is careful stewardship through clear guidelines for development consistent with what the area means to the community. Another is encouraging a level of intensive mixed-use development so that the critical mass of social and economic activity can be reached that will naturally provide the resources and inspiration required to maintain and organically adapt the area landmarks, buildings, and infrastructure without excessive burden to the town's public finances. The purpose, in pursuit of this opportunity and to address this challenge, the town implements this bylaw and designates this zoning district as Village Center District in order to encourage economic and residential growth that fits the character of the town. The purpose of this Village Center District are to build upon historic development patterns in the existing Village Center to create attractive, walkable neighborhoods, encourage adaptive reuse of abandoned, vacant, or underutilized buildings or structures where appropriate, allow for a mix of new land uses that are appropriate to both the needs of the community and the scale of surrounding neighborhoods, and provide incentives to develop larger parcels at higher densities and coordinated planned approach, which for reference, when we say larger parcels, we mostly mean the town-owned school parcels, be it the Passios or the primary or other municipal properties. And finally, maintain a consistently high level of design quality throughout the district and encourage the development of mixed-use buildings and campuses that are designed and constructed in a manner that is contextually sensitive to existing structures and facilities."
Thanks very much, Damon. So... Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open the floor to members of the public and other boards who are here with us tonight to speak with regard to the Village Center District Bylaw.
Good evening, how you guys doing?
Good.
My name is Dave McDonald in Lunenburg. I'm also a member of the Building Reuse Committee. First of all, Mr. Lockwood, I just want to thank you personally for all the time and effort you put into this committee. You've done a great job, and I wish you well on your future endeavors.
Thanks, Steve.
An excellent bylaw, by the way. I know there's been a lot of work in it. I just have a couple of comments, if I could, on page three, under Professional Offices. Excellent, I think that's a great feature to have in this town. The only problem that I would have would be on page four, under newly constructed one-story buildings except for a single family. The industry that I'm in, if a bank wanted to come in, or a dentist's office, or someone like that, would probably want a one-story building. Banks would do it just because of security. They usually don't go in there unless it's a workers' credit union where they have their facilities up above. But what would happen if a customer wanted to come in and build a one-story professional building, like a dentist's office or something like that? That's the only one of the concerns I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert E. Russell, 94 Main Street. Question on page five, dimensional requirements. Minimum lot requirement is not applicable. Does that mean there is no lot minimum in the Village Center District?
Correct.
Okay.
Provided that you can fit all your necessary infrastructure on 85% lot coverage.
Right. So my concern with that is that... And I'll use the unintended consequences again, that there are various lots of land that have various open space within its parcels, whether it's its own parcel, that somebody now would be able to come in and do a subdivision, not required, plan to transfer the land from one property to another, and therefore could therefore create additional space that would allow for parking for that other property. And I can't cite any situations right at the moment, but my concern with this bylaw generally is that it will increase the opportunity for somebody to create more commercial in a way that's not intended. The other part is that I mentioned at the other meeting, minimum front setback of five feet. While there are properties that are close to the street, there are many other that are not, and I would be concerned that this may encourage building in front of historical buildings within the district, and therefore bring the development to the street and at the point of decimating the historic district.
Thank you.
Rebecca Lantry, 251 West Street, from the Lunenburg Historical Commission. My one comment to make is that I think if map goes too far, I would love to see it limited to Mass Ave only, and those Mass Ave properties, I would like to not see it finger down into the neighborhoods of Lancaster Road. I'd like it not to finger down into the roads of Lancaster Road and Main Street beyond the Andrews Hall area. That's it.
All right, any other comment tonight?
Jamie Toll, 147 Peninsula Drive. Mine is more of an administrative discussion. In previous meetings, you've discussed connecting the Architectural Preservation District warrant article to this particular one. And in my reading, I know that the Architectural Preservation District work is a work in progress. I've noticed an update just today that I haven't had a chance to look at in substantial detail, but I would suggest that, in my opinion, it is a little more restrictive and not totally in support of a lot of the objectives that you read in your preamble and objectives for the Village District, particularly in the areas of encouraging commercial development, encouraging walkability, encouraging attracting citizenship to the downtown area, et cetera. And in your discussions, you talked about connecting the two on the warrant article and suggesting that if the architectural protection warrant did not pass town, meaning you might withhold the Village District. I would encourage you strongly to separate them and let them stand on their own merits. I think that your work, the planning committee's work to develop a strong Village District bylaw is good, and it takes into consideration the historic nature of the town and the value of all the buildings in the town, but it also has some objectives around reusing town-owned buildings and encouraging commercial development as a target reason for people to come to town. And I'd like to see that stand on its own and not be connected to another decision that the town folks have to make. Thank you.
Troy Daniels, 94 Main Street. Reading through this, I haven't participated in a lot of these meetings, but I have some concerns about vagueness. I don't really know what's meant by "underutilized." It talks... Village Center District talks about through clear guidelines, but I don't know what those are. Fits the character of the town, seems vague to me as well. Historic development patterns, appropriate to traditional New England architecture on page six. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means specifically. So I have concerns about vagueness and would like to know what it is that you envision for those definitions.
So I'll just... Because there were some questions in that statement, just to address the, in particular the part about the New England on page six, the New England character, there was actually more specifics, even as of our last meeting on that. We intentionally removed the specifics from there because of the... It's being... This bylaw is being created in conjunction with the APD bylaw, or the APD, it's not a bylaw, what is the...
It's a general bylaw.
The APD general bylaw. The APD general bylaw will... Is more specific already and will provide a significantly more specific framework around design guidelines and that sort of thing. So that's what... Around the New England character, that's where the specifics will come in regarding that. I think some of the things you were mentioning might have been from the preamble. You know, as far as... There may be... There are some things that are... The language in the preamble is not necessarily intended to be ultra-specific. And yeah, I mean, things like "underutilized," I mean, I think in the... I think for people... Oh, go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may. Things like historic development pattern is looking at the way that the town center exists and the way that it got to where it exists now. This is not a planned community. It's a community that grew up organically, and so that would be the historic development pattern, something that's not, you know, we're going to have square streets, we're going to have a density of X. It's a... It's more organic, it's looking at the way that historic New England architecture, colonial architecture, how things have grown and spread over time, and show, you know, the different stages of a building. If you look at almost any building or home downtown, they have had additions built. A lot of them are not, you know, pristine, original structures. So that would be the development pattern. So buildings would mirror that, and although they may be a new monolithic build, they would have the appearance of different phases of construction, different roof lines, that kind of, you know... There's no real... You can get into New England architecture if you want to talk architecturally, but it's, you know, the old adage of pornography, you know it when you see it. New England architecture is kind of that, and it's reminiscing about the area that is here. It's intentionally vague to not shoehorn the town into requiring somebody to do something ultra-specific because that might handcuff somebody, a homeowner who wishes to do something. A lot of these things, "underutilized," that can mean essentially it's a building that is not being occupied to its highest and best use. There are buildings... Is it called the Corner House? I'm still getting used to what buildings are called on the corner of Mass Ave and Lancaster Road. I know that it's had a variety of commercial and residential uses over the years. Currently, that building is underutilized. I don't know what it's used for, but it's not being used to its highest and best. So that would be an opportunity for occupying a building that's underutilized. The building itself doesn't necessarily need to change, but there's the opportunity for it to be used in a manner that offers more to the residents, to the site, and to the community. So a lot of... In bylaws, you're going to deal with some flowery, vague language, especially when you're getting in preambles and purposes, because they're sort of outlining intentions more than a concrete this or that. There are some concrete definite things in there, but there are also some, you know, sort of feelings and intentions, and that's kind of where those words come in. And I know the New England architecture is further on, but, you know, I think Nathan explained that very well, why it's left in there and what the specificity was and where it went.
Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. I have a question, and this was vaguely discussed at your last meeting. The overlap of timeframe between the APD District and the creation of the committee associated with that proposed bylaw and the implementation of these bylaws. Condition number 11 under Buildings Design Standards talks about all buildings within the Village Center District shall be subject to the requirements of the Architectural Preservation District. This is on page seven. As noted in the Architectural Preservation District, it's going to take some time to appoint a five-member committee to oversee the APD, and there's a whole setup process. What happens if someone submits an application prior to the development of the APD committee?
Through the chair. 4172, on page two, the Establishment Clause actually has an establishment date of 1 January 2016...
Okay.
...to allow for the timeframes of the APD to be hit, and builds in a little bit of a cushion to allow for whatever may happen. The APD being a general bylaw doesn't technically go into effect until we've received the Attorney General's blessing. So town meeting plus 10 days, plus 90 days, and then you can start all of the fun...
Standing up for the committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this gives us six months, three of which are required in the timeframes for the APD, and, you know, you add the three in for the AG, and I think that that should hopefully give everybody enough time to get all that settled.
Okay. And just to follow up on one of the questions, and I'm not sure that it was answered. In the event that a bank wanted to come forward and it was a single-story proposal, that would be prohibited even with a special permit as the regulations are written, or can they get a special permit for new construction of a single-family building?
That would be prohibited, yeah.
It would be prohibited even with a special permit.
Yes.
Single-story building would be strictly prohibited.
Unless it were a single-family home.
Okay, thank you.
An existing single... But newly constructed one-story buildings.
Good evening. Chuck Hining, 755 West Street. I guess my comments here is more to the general bylaw, that it is hopefully going to make sure we protect the center of the town and its historic integrity. One of the key reasons why these kind of bylaws are written is to make sure the town has a sense of character long after we've passed through here. And it's my hope that this bylaw goes a long way into doing that and protecting the town because it's... We've had discussions in town over the last 25, 30 years about, well, we'll tear that building down because it's really not any good anymore. And I would much rather see energy put into finding new reuses for it. So it's my hope this bylaw goes a long way to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Again, as a member of the Building Reuse Committee, I would strongly urge this board to reconsider the one-story building for homes only in the Village District. There's a lot of customers out there that would be interested in coming to town and would still fall within the character of the town if there was a one, single-story building. So I hope the board seriously considers that as far as the expansion for the downtown Village District.
So Dave, if you could... If you... Mr. McDonald, if you wouldn't mind hanging out here for just a second. So one thing, I just want to make sure is... You probably picked this up, I just want to make it clear for the audience. So we're talking about the following uses are prohibited in the Village Center District, C1, newly constructed one-story buildings except single-family homes. So that's newly constructed one-story buildings. This would not impact, for example, reuse of the TC Passios building?
No, but it could impact some other property that's here in town. But by... And again, I'm looking at the professional office category. Again, if you got a... Everything you have listed here, it's usually not a two-story building. If I was going to come in and build a bank, for an example, I wouldn't want a two-story building.
Yeah, so we had a discussion about this. I'm glad you brought this up, and we had a discussion last week on this topic, and just I'm glad you're bringing it up at the public hearing so that whoever's tuning into the public hearing can, you know, participate in this discussion as well. Damon mentioned to us similar things that he'd been talking to people about, and basically the thing about one-story buildings that's, I guess... You certainly can make a single-story building that is compatible with New England architecture. The... Where it starts to rub up against some of the goals of the Village Center District is in terms of the effort we're making to get a sort of a density of people and activity in the space. So someone seeking to build a business that would typically want a single floor, the zoning here is going to encourage them to maybe do that, but do it as mixed-use with some apartments on top or something like that.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I was, say, XYZ Bank and wanted to build a two-story building, I could actually build a two-story... building? So all I'm saying is that as far as the building reuse, to make it viable for the town and bring business into town, I would hope that this board would consider that and talk about it as far as professional use. And again, your category on page three is excellent, describes that. But you don't see too many two-story dentists or engineers or lawyers unless they take over an old, an old building in town that's adaptable, or they do new construction. But you can do new construction on a single-story building that fits into your guidelines for commercial. And I'm just saying is that if you look at the commercial district as it sits, we're not talking a lot of opportunity to come up and build a new building. So it may come up today, or it may come up in the future. But I think hopefully, if you can allow it with a special permit, and you people be the deciding factor on that. That's all I'm saying when it comes to business use under your professional office category.
Oh, thanks for bringing it up, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. So would you guys be against adding that to the special permit?
So I personally, I'll just speak for myself and let others speak for themselves. You know, I think, there's, long story short, there's kind of limited acreage in the Village Center District. Ultimately, it's a relatively small part of town. Certainly, you know, in our broader commercial districts and retail commercial districts, some of which we could also use to revisit the zoning of, you know, I think it probably makes sense to accommodate the type of construction that Dave's talking about, given the limited space in the Village District and our goals around increasing density, you know, among other things, I think, I think it's, it's one of the cases where, although those are, there probably, there may be some cases where, you know, it's a deal breaker to do two stories for a certain type of business. In this particular area of town, it, you know, we'll take a pass on it and hope that we can accommodate those businesses in other zoning districts in the town of Lunenburg.
Yeah, but for example, just saying, if you allow it by special permit, you've already incentivized it to put the second floor on to avoid a special permit process. So still being flexible, but you've incentivized the two stories.
It's a fair point. I, you know, I don't disagree with that.
I would like to speak to that point as well. The whole idea of this is to increase density, to create walkability, and we've already, we've already understood that there's a limited amount of parking in the center of town. If we can create retail, commercial space for businesses on the first floor with livable space above, with the creation of that is going to come parking spaces. So we're going to have, we're going to effectively create a base of people who live in town, and there's walkability there, and hopefully we will increase parking availability in the center of town. So it would incentivize people to come to town, park their car, walk around, go from business to business, maybe visit some people who already live here in the center of town. The whole idea was to increase density and to promote commercial, retail business. And it, we, it's not a limited amount of space, it's a finite amount of space. We're not creating, there is no place, except for Dubai, where they're creating new land. We have to utilize what we have most effectively to bring about the change that we'd like most to see. And by being vague, we were allowing areas for us to say, well, that's really not with the character and what the intent was behind this bylaw, could you please try to come more around to being closer to the vagary? And the restriction of the one-story I just addressed with Dave, no lot minimum. There are a good number of lots existing in this center that do not meet the 75-foot minimum frontage. I would hope that we could include them in the potential for reuse. New construction, I would think, would be 75-foot minimum, but existing uses, I would think it's an existing non-conforming lot already. Why would we want to restrict them from developing it into maybe a bed and breakfast or a retail down below?
If they're pre-existing non-conforming lots, that's something that they can...
Right, but I mean, we specify a 75-foot minimum lot, frontage.
But a pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay.
If my recollection of the statute is correct, would be, continue to be pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay. That's good. I hope that's the case. And then the last point, separate the VCD from the APD, the Village Center from the Architectural Preservation. The intent was there that the Architectural Preservation actually, it's more focused on the existing buildings, whereas this Village Center District is more focused on new development or expansion of existing development. And we just felt that, speaking for myself, my understanding of our conversations was that by not going forward with the Village Center unless the APD went through, the APD allows for much greater protection of existing historical buildings than the Village Center does on its own. And that had been a suggestion of mine, to take and new construction be subject to the Village Center District and reuse be subject to the APD. But I believe that that was the reason that we didn't want to go through if the APD didn't pass. Just a clarification.
Good point. I just want to backtrack a little bit as far as the viability of a downtown district. And I think Maggie did a good job explaining that. But if you build a two-story building on a small lot, you're going to have a problem with parking. Where if you have a lot, like you can put a one-story building with ample parking for a business, that would be the objective. Now, if the lot's too big, that might be, you might want to put a restriction as far as what kind of a lot. But there are going to be some areas, and again, maybe not today, but in the future, where a two-story building won't have the, except the parking, where a one-story building would. So, and that's why I'm saying, you know, in your wisdom, take a look at it, we are trying to bring business and customers and just to general residents to walk the street. But there are other pieces out there that are going on. And speaking for myself on the building reuse, you have the Passio, you have the old high school, there's a lot of opportunities coming. This is very important to set the tone where that's going to go. That's why we've been sitting there waiting for this to happen. And again, I can't emphasize great job, but I would really just take, again, look at the professional offices, because that's probably what's going to be more downtown. You're not going to see a Walmart. You're not going to see a 10,000-square-foot supermarket. It's not going to happen. But you will see individual offices, and it's an opportunity, like Mr. McQuig, you mentioned, where some homeowners can actually turn some of their residents into a viable business for themselves. And I think that's the great opportunity. But you really want to take a look at it, what can we do to bring more businesses in the town, and if it will fit within the district? And again, I think you might have some areas where parking for a two-story building might be limited. And the whole thing will be denied at that point. Thank you.
One of the terms that I've heard consistently is increasing density. And the preamble says, one of these is careful stewardship through clear guidelines for development consistent with what the area means to the community. And we also talked about fits the character of the town, historic development patterns, and underutilized properties. One of the examples it was given was the property on the quote-unquote, the Corner House, Lancaster Ave and Mass Ave. And I'm wondering if a priority is increasing density, or if the priority is that careful stewardship through clear guidelines? And what does that mean for that house? And if someone were to come to you and say, we want to turn that into, back into a residential home, would that be consistent with what you're seeking to do with this Village Center District bylaw? Is it a bylaw? So I guess I'm confused because it's not through, to me, it's not clear guidelines for development consistent with what the area means to the community. I don't know what those are. I'd like to know what you vision, or what your vision or envision for that district or that area. What does it look like to you?
And I think we've outlined that as far as the emphasis on uses and mixed use. Again, we're not allowing wholesale freedom for any kind of development. This is professional offices, professional services, restaurants, bed and breakfast.
Actually, would you mind, just for the folks out in TV land, reading, this is kind of quick, read through the...
The use provisions.
The use provisions? Yeah, I think that'd be helpful to folks.
So the following uses are allowed by right, subject to any development plan review requirements listed in Section 8.4 and all applicable density and design provisions listed in this bylaw. So we do outline density and design provisions later on. But the use provisions as follows. Retail with a maximum of 5,000 square foot of floor area. 21 needs a picture of that. Our post office right now is 6,600 square feet, so smaller than the post office. Professional office space, meaning an architect, an engineer, a lawyer. Personal services, massage therapist, something of that nature. Artist-based, self-explanatory restaurant. I kind of touched on the restaurant the past two meetings as far as parking requirements. Restaurants are pretty intensive in their needs for parking, and a large restaurant simply not feasible on the bulk of these properties, given the amount of parking needed to go along with it. So you're talking about small-scale restaurant, cafe. Bed and breakfast, another use. Mixed use containing less than 5,000 square feet per individual proposed use.
And so, yeah, let's, just for folks who aren't familiar with mixed use, would you mind explaining what mixed use is?
Again, any combination of uses. We've been talking about apartments going along with any of these small uses. Trying to encourage a living and working environment to get people inhabiting the area, using the area, enjoying the area. And then we go on to talk about civic uses, and that was it for by right. As you go into uses allowed by special permit, single and two-family homes allowed by special permit, again, because we're talking about reduced lot sizes here and setbacks. We don't want someone to come in and say, oh, I'm going to build tract housing right here because of these new setbacks. We're saying that that's against what we're trying to accomplish, that doesn't have a mix of uses, doesn't inspire that living, working feel. So that's, would be by special permit. Multifamily homes, again, allowed by special permit only. Apartment complex is the same thing. Because they're singular uses and they're not accomplishing those goals of community development that we've been talking about. Movie house or theater is allowed by special permit. Liquor store by special permit. Outdoor markets subject to applicable licensing requirements. A private club. Drive-throughs are only allowed by special permit and only for banks. Retail uses greater than 5,000 square feet can be provided, but only through special permit. And uses allowed by right with floor area greater than 5,000 square feet. So any of the uses I said before by right, if they're larger than 5,000 square feet, they have to go through special permit. And then we have special permit approval criteria. The zoning board of appeals shall act upon all applications after notice and public hearing, and after due consideration may grant such special permit, provided it finds the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and promote the purposes of the Village Center District. The use is in harmony with those of abutting properties. So again, we're being very considerate of the neighbors, giving them their chance for appeal through special permit process, and in front of the zoning boards of appeals can express any of their concerns they may have of their abutter's doings.
For special permits.
For special permits, yep. As applicable, they're also supposed to review all applicable standards for use, parking and dimensional requirements. All applicable design standards listed in Section 8 are met. And where multiple structures are proposed, the site design reflects a thoughtful arrangement of elements that will facilitate the movement of pedestrians between structures through the use of sidewalks, internal walkways, alleys, open space features. So we're talking, again, about how a site should be laid out in generally walkable way and relate to the scale of, you know, the community where, that we're trying to achieve here.
Thank you, Damon. Hey, Tori.
I guess my question has been answered in part. I'm trying to get to the point of what is underutilized? Are you retaining the determination to say that something's being underutilized, therefore it's not acceptable within this district? And what is underutilized, and how do you define that? I noticed also on page nine, you've reduced from 40 to 35% the facade for transparency? And I'm wondering, is that 35% consistent with something that you've determined? Is that where it fits already? Is that something that...
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, for the 35%, there were some graphics over on the table there, I believe, still, that kind of show what 35% looks like, 40% looks like, so you can get a feel for that. But as far as underutilized, and your question's there, that line really stems from talking about our municipal buildings. We certainly weren't pointing at anyone's house and saying it's underutilized. That was not the intent, not what we're trying to get at here. We have the old primary school that's vacant. We have the Brooks House that's significantly underutilized. We have the Ritter Building, which has been recommended that we might try to do something with it.
And I don't think it's a matter of, underutilized buildings don't fit in the district. It's an opportunity to take these buildings and find a use that's higher and better for the community. So just because it's a house, maybe that's perfectly utilized for that building. But the buildings that Damon mentioned, I mean, clearly the primary school is underutilized. I don't think that there's anybody who's going to argue that. And I think that that's, that's the kind of buildings where underutilized targets. It's not every building that's not doing everything in this bylaw. It's a building that has ample opportunity to have a higher purpose and is denied that opportunity through legal means. Right now, all of those buildings are residential. So to do anything in those buildings, you can't, except house people. Which, again, is a perfectly valid option, but for some of those buildings, that's not an appropriate use.
Yeah, so just to make it, I think you drive the point home pretty well. So in some ways, so based on what else, you can see a lot of the changes that are in the bylaw is sort of opening up the legal framework, the zoning framework, to allow for opportunities where there's a good fit with what's useful to the community and a good fit with what's, what the building can be adapted to or what it was built to, so that that can happen and, you know, kind of things can become rejuvenated a bit.
Thank you, Jamie Toll. Again, I am a member of the Building Reuse Committee, and I'd like to respond to one of the earlier speakers who talked about our obligation to the historic nature of the town and passing on the existing character of the town to future generations. As the zoning currently exists, it is primarily, and I know it's not 100%, but it's primarily residential use and some exceptions for church and municipal use. So the burden to reuse any existing building that's underutilized falls on the town for the most part. So that would, the obligation that we have for future generations would in fact be on a taxpayer's dime, and we'd have to have a use for that building to legitimately ask the taxpayers to do that. What we're recommending is to broaden the zoning, to allow for us to make available the buildings in the town that are not utilized by the town and probably will not be needed by the town in the relatively near future, to be open for development as something that would make a contribution towards the town, whether it be a retail operation, a commercial operation. Certainly, it would reuse buildings, it would try to maintain their historical architecture, et cetera, if possible. But the objective is for someone else to be our partner and invest in that rehabilitation and use of the town. I think we would all agree that maintaining historical buildings empty and underutilized and decaying is not, is not the objective of reuse. There may come an example, and I hate to keep using the Passios as the one and only example because it's not, where the best use of that particular facility is to demolish it and to build something that fits the town on somebody else's investment, but meets the characteristics of what the town desires. And I want to clearly point out that town-owned property that's made available in this way will be done so through an RFP, a Request for Proposal. And we can set, as... And we can set, as a town, what we require for someone who wants to bid on that property. And we can set restrictions, and we can set our objectives, and we can talk about architecture and talk about design when we put it out for bid. But at the same time, I think it's naive of us to think that if we have a numerous amount of restrictions and multiple boards and approval processes, that we would attract anybody to do that. So I encourage us to think of the balance between reusing the property as an investment in our town, paid for by someone other than the taxpayers, as opposed to maintaining it for the town so that we have a historical building on our dime that we may or not, may or may not be able to rehabilitate. Thank you.
Rebecca Lantre, the historical commission. I'd like to give some advice, this business about the single-story building. Professional office buildings. My husband occupies a professional office building on Wayland Street in Fitchburg. It is a two-story building with a mixture of both dentists and M.D.s. They have newly built across the street, a dentist's building that is two stories. Newly built up the street, a two-story dentist's building. So two-story is the norm for professional office buildings. It is not the exception. The other point I wanted to make was that perhaps you need to think about the parking requirement in more of a Quincy Market type of faction, that you're wanting to encourage walkability, then put the parking off on the periphery and make people walk. Make them go past buildings that they wouldn't normally go to, to get to one that they want to get to, and perhaps see a business that they weren't necessarily interested in, but now are attracted to. So you need to think, if that's what you're doing, that with limited amount of space, limited amount of parking to be able to be provided, perhaps they need to walk.
Well, they need to get, well, just respond, they need to get to the center of town to walk there. If they live in the edge of town, you can't certainly walk to the center of town. And we've had other, other, other people come and express their needs that we aren't providing enough parking requirements, and they'll be worried that there's traffic jams in the center of town. So I think we found a balance.
Yeah, just one comment on that, too. Another, another, it's a pretty big bylaw, and there's a lot to read. One of the things I think is useful about the bylaw is it, one of the interesting and flexible things about, I think that you make some great points there, Rebecca, is that actually it's very flexible on parking. There is provisions in here. There's clear parking requirements, so businesses need to ensure that they are not going to create complete traffic jams, and there's parking requirements. However, there's also a provision that allows businesses to find, to, to have the option to sort of allot for their parking on peripheral areas that aren't even adjacent to them. What that allows for is for businesses who believe their clientele will not be unduly deterred by the types of walks you're talking about, they can take advantage of those provisions and maybe, you know, get a, you know, use a space that would otherwise not be useful and create an experience that would otherwise be more difficult to create. While other businesses who felt that it was really important for their clientele to have really, you know, convenient parking, they would look for one of, they would look to develop on one of the parcels where parking was more abundant and whatnot. So I think there's a good balance in that sense in the provision.
Well, I'll speak to that a little bit. We provide two different areas for relief from required parking. One for shared onsite parking for non-competing uses. The applicant can apply to up to a 50 percent reduction in required spaces, simply because if they've got a lot of retail on the first floor, which is a daily demand, and they've got housing on the second floor, which people leave in the morning, they come back in the evening, those parking spaces can easily be shared, because the retail would not likely be open when the person comes home from work. The other one is off-site parking. And the state bylaw, model bylaw recommended 500 feet, we've increased that to 1,000 feet. And with the signed, with the signed application allowing for the provision of parking within 1,000 feet of the use, they can include off-site parking as part of their onsite requirements, which is going to produce just that, is going to make them park somewhere and walk past a bunch of other buildings. So I think that's worth mentioning. Also, our parking requirements, they're about half as, they're about half as heavy for residential as commercial, which makes sense, because we're promoting first-floor residents and two and three stories of potential living space above. So there's kind of a balance and.
First floor business.
First floor retail, second and third story, right. Or commercial. The, the self-limiting factors that Damon's emphasized before about the lot sizes and lot shapes, they're also built into these regulations. By, by the mixed use, they're encouraged to have twice as much residential as commercial or retail, just simply due to the parking requirements. So there, there has been considerable effort put into finding a nice balance.
I think it's also important to mention, 1,000 feet is a little less than a quarter mile, and the district essentially fits into a circle that has a radius of approximately a quarter mile. Quarter mile is what generally transportation-type people consider as a walkable distance. So in most places in the district, you can place a parking lot and have it be within a reasonable walking distance to a good portion of the district. So it allows for exactly what you're talking about. So just to emphasize, reemphasize Matt's point.
If I may say one other thing about it, I think when you look at what's being done with some of the dimensional standards, there is a, it's hard to foresee exactly how the district may evolve, but there, there is space here and there, it's accessible, that may be accessible to the streets. So once the zoning is there to support businesses and things that have a demand for parking, there are opportunities and spaces, not, as we all know, they're, they're limited, but they do exist, where you could see parking emerge in the district to support the, the businesses and new residences that, that come up.
And again, we also in the bylaw request the parking be behind or beside the building, not in front of the historic building, redefining that front yard and making it unappealing.
Absolutely. Great point.
I absolutely agree with the goal of maintaining our historic structures. I think it's critical to the town of Lunenburg, to the character of the community. But I'm very concerned about specifically the Paseos Elementary School and the limitations on the reuse of that property that I think this, this bylaw will place on it. I think that limiting the opportunities for businesses to do a single-family, while certainly there may be professional office buildings that have multiple stories, and if that were to happen, that's terrific. However, I think that this board, I urge you to consider the possibility of adding a special permit for a one-story operation on that particular site, because I think that by, as was noted earlier, most likely if someone were to come in, they would want to demolish that structure. And I think if we talk about maintaining the character of our community, the character of that community, since that building has been built, is a one-story structure. Now we're going to open it up for multiple stories, and I think that that's going to change the landscape right there. I think that, as, as was said earlier by Mr. McQuade, you've incentivized people to do a two-story so they don't have to go through the special permit process. But at least allow the opportunity for single-family retail, single-story retail opportunities to come to that site. Because you talked about there's other opportunities in Lunenburg. There are very, very limited opportunities for commercial and retail enterprises in the town of Lunenburg, as you're aware. This is one of the largest parcels that we have and one of the biggest opportunities that this community has.
And I, again, I agree with that, that at least by special permit, we should allow, whether it's just professional office or if we want to include other uses in that special permit. We've incentivized it by allowing them not to go through special permit, but I think that we need to be, should be at least flexible and allow it through some avenue.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm open to that. Let me ask you a question, and, and the board, and Adam, if he has any thoughts on this as well. So do we have, so let's pretend we're on the zoning board of appeals now. We're going to fast forward. This passes, we have the special permit for single-story use. What's, what am I, if I'm on the zoning board of appeals and I get a lot of requests for one-story uses, how am I going to sort of?
Well, B, I mean, our clause B is in harmony with those of the abutting properties, right? So if you're trying to put single-story structures in between multi-story family homes that we have today, you would likely not adhere to, to that requirement. But like, as, as Paul had pointed out, if it's the, if it's a reuse for the elementary school, then it would fit with, with the look of the environment is today.
Are those all multi-story buildings around there, though?
Yep.
And the new high school's multi-story. The Brooks House is multiple-story. The library's a single-story, but has a multi-story appearance. The church is multiple-story. So I think that you, and I know, when you go inside, it's one floor, but height-wise and mass-wise, you know, I, I understand both sides of it. I think that, you know, it's mentioned, professional office, nobody wants to be on the second floor. There are a lot of places where first-floor retail is stacked with second-story doctors, dentists, lawyers, accountants, engineers, architects. So I think that both exist. It's a 10-acre site, as it stands right now, give or take with the, the sketch. So, you know, if we're looking at it in the ballpark of 10 acres, somebody has a lot of opportunities to do a variety of different things. People, if they want to be someplace, will be creative. If you give them a reasonable tool to do it. People will also get in a habit of, this is what I want to build, and they'll build it. I'm sure, I'm sure we've all been places.
So doesn't the special permit, like, like, provide both opportunities there? So it, it's obviously discouraged, because the, the bylaw certainly favors multi-story, certainly favors multi-use. They can definitely do that without jumping through near as many hoops. But if they have a, a design that absolutely fits that location, that looks like it belongs here, and they really want to, to move forward with it, but it's a single-story structure, at least we give them a provision to have it, you know, brought forth.
Sure.
And be looked at, as opposed to just flatly saying, no, it's prohibited.
And at least in that example, where it's a larger site and probably a campus, they could also do a mix.
Sure.
Two-story buildings and one-story.
And I guess that's sort of the next sort of evolution of the discussion is, do you want to do it for any and all sites, or do you want to do it for sites below a certain size, above a certain size, within a certain range? You know, I mean, I think that we've all been to a variety of places. I think the Cape is a good example. There's communities in the Cape where you go to McDonald's and from the outside, you'd never believe it was a McDonald's. There's cities where you go and Home Depot looks like it fits into their old fabric of the city. Now, Lunenburg is a lovely community. I'm not going to compare it to, you know, some of the, the places on the Cape that have really latched on to that, that fish shanty architecture and have something like the Cape Cod Commission that can enforce it and have local historic regulations, or cities that have that very distinct sense of place. There's a distinct sense of downtown Lunenburg, but it may not be as well-defined as some of these places. But there's examples of multinational corporations changing their entire branding, because they want to be somewhere. Might you miss some opportunities by eliminating the two stories? Yes. Can you be flexible? Sure. I think there's an opportunity to be both. And, you know, as you said, maybe it's a matter of, one stories can be allowed as part of a campus where there's a, a mixture of buildings as a, a way to sort of find some, some common ground that you can come to if, if it's determined the two stories are the most important part of the historic nature. So there's a non-answer for you.
It sounds like if we added on the prohibit clause, except single-family homes, we could say, and mixed campus usages.
Sure.
That might be a, an easy resolution to it, and it would still prohibit a one-story building in the middle of multiple, multi-story homes.
Yeah, and I guess you'd probably want to add it to the special permit as well.
Right.
And you probably want to establish a percentage of that mix if you choose that avenue. That would probably be appropriate.
Hi, Dave, again, I just want to make a couple of comments. One is, I've been on a building reuse now for a year. We've been working on this project. When the RFP does go out, I would like to send something nice out to the prospective clients who are going to be looking at this. But when you talk about asides, I mean, you can look at the library, I think that's a one-story building. You can look at the church, that's a one-story building with a very tall ceiling. So we do have, we do have one-story buildings, but it all goes back to the architectural of what that building's going to look like. But I hope you, again, consider putting in a one-story building for commercial use, especially in the areas that we're looking to reuse. We're not looking to tear down a, we're not looking to tear down a primary, we're looking to expand on this. But if we limit it to some clients, and I'll give you a good example, is a Starbucks Coffee, for example. Most of them now, they go into historic buildings, but again, the accessibility for handicap abilities. And if you take a look at the building at the center of town where Judy Streets used to be, there's another area that has a great potential for improvement. But going back to the one-story building, that'll give us an extra plus to get out there and try to sell this property to a good developer. So again, this is what I do for a living. I deal with retailers and I deal with developers. So I'm giving you what we think we need to make this work for all of us, especially for the residents of Lunenburg to take some of their tax burning off of us. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that. The, it's not like we're prohibiting anybody or putting unjust restrictions. I mean, it would not be difficult for a retailer to create a smaller footprint and put whatever offices it would have had on the first floor on the second floor. It could have vacant space that's available to use for storage, or they may not even need to use it, but just the ability, once you build, once you build a structure, it's very difficult to rip it down and, or, or build on top of it. Typically, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's a lot easier to rip it down and build a new structure if you want to have multi-story, once you start with a single story. So I mean, the expansion capabilities are there, and I, I just don't see that you're limiting anybody. We've already got two banks in, well, we've got north, we've got two banks in town.
I think, and all due respect, I appreciate your opinion, but it's not up to you to decide what business wants to come to town. It's up to the person. If I want to put a bank in town, if I meet the requirements, I should be able to do that. To build a second floor and have it useless is a waste of money. No developers are going to do that. I mean, they're going to laugh at that. And again, I'm looking at, for the purposes of trying to make the town center vibrant, try to keep the historical character, unlimited parking. I think this would be the solution, is to grant a special permit when you do that. That's all I'm saying. But when a planning board number says we don't have, we don't need a bank, that bothers me, because you're speaking for businesses that I represent that want to come out and try to make Lunenburg their home, similar to CPS. I mean, CPS came here looking, they want to do business in town. They shouldn't have to jump hoops to do that, which I guess they did. I don't know if I remember the story, but it took them a while just to read this. So I'm looking to be more friendly to our developers who want to come into town, but give them these guidelines before they come in.
I'm just thinking that they could easily find a spot on the periphery of this village center district to do just that.
Again, when it goes out for the RFP, we're going to get all kinds of inquiries about it.
Well, reuse is not subject to that.
Well, even if somebody wants to come in, and again, if you have a building vacant that's open, where the size limitation of the, of the area only allows a one-story building because of the parking. Again, that's what I'm saying, a special permit would dictate that. Thank you.
I guess I would like to express an opinion somewhere on the flip side of that, when it, when we talk about fits the character of the town, also in consideration of a specific piece of property that's directly adjacent to a school. I would be hesitant to, as a matter of right, allow, say for instance, a Motel Six to go in next door to the high school. Six to go in next door to the high school. So I, I have some hesitancy about what, what it is we're trying to do, what it is we would allow by a matter of right, and, um, what fits the character of the town.
So just to be clear, uh, Motel Six, just to give you some comfort, is, a motel would, is not a permitted use either by right or special permit. So we don't have to lose sleep about that particular scenario if this were to pass at, at this point anyways.
I think when we talk about reuse, we have to go into this, especially about the Passios site, we have to go into this with an open mind. But one of the things that's been talked about is the possibility of an over-55 community or elderly housing, which I think would be perfect there because it's adjacent to the Council on Aging, it's adjacent to the library, it's walkable to the town center, it would be perfect. I take care of my dad. He moved out of his house because it was two stories. So, you know, I, I think you look at some of these senior housing projects, you looked at assisted living, over-55 communities, the majority of them are one-story. Now we're going to require a two-story. So I think that you need to look at the possibility of a special permit for, and, and I think maybe the idea of a certain lot area might make sense, but at least look at opportunities because I don't think we want to be in a position where we're shutting off opportunities that make sense to the town center. I think that the objectives are to incre, to maintain the, the historic, uh, architecture, to increase walkability, to, and to increase economic opportunities, and to provide some for existing residents, and I think all of those are good. And I understand the hesitancy about allowing single-family structures, but at the same time, there needs to be a balance because we're talking about a very large piece of property that will take some of the tax burden off residents, and I think we have to be open to opportunities, certainly put in safeguards and restrictions, but at the same time, to simply say, "No," I don't think is in the best interest of the community.
So to make a, just a proposal, since we've talked a lot about this single-story special permit thing, could we say, allow, single-story use, and emphasize that when it's utilized, that it addresses the design standards laid out in section four, or is it?
Everything, I think, is already under those standards.
Yeah, but just again, we re, we emphasize it in other places, but even if it were a one-story building and it were allowed by the special permit, which I'm suggesting, the design standards say all buildings shall have a principal facade entry with operable doors facing the street or open space. Buildings may have more than one principal ent, facade or entry. This is established through, again, inspire walkability, invite people into the building. Uh, we've covered building finish materials should be appropriate to traditional England architecture, but building facades, materials and roof lines shall be reviewed under the special permit granting authority to ensure consistency and compatibility with other structures. So it's not just going to be a flat building that do show that it's been integrated into the community properly. Blank walls adjacent to streets, alleys or open spaces are not permitted, uh, where windows are not possible or appropriate to the intended use, vertical articulation, form of raised and recessed surfaces shall be used to break up the blank walls. So you're not going to get a big blank, you know, Walmart wall, not that Walmart can fit, but still, you're not going to get a big block facade that's going to be articulated in and out, just to, uh, express as being built over time, like we, we talked about the traditional New England architecture. Um, new retail buildings shall have one of the following features along the front entrances to pedestrians, uh, being awnings, marquee, entry, arcades or colonnades, again, to invite people in, make them warm and inviting. Uh, flat roofs that are visible from the street are prohibited unless appropriate facade is included in the design. So again, they will have to show some type of articulation. It's not going to look like a flat, low-slung building. There'll be some review as to the facade of it. And larger buildings with multiple non-residential tenants on the first floor shall articulate the facade in a manner that distinguishes the location of these tenants to the use of decorative rays or depressed vertical surfaces, variations of acceptable signage, awnings, marquees, colonnades or facades, again, breaking up the mass of the building. So when you have multiple tenants, a larger building, we talked about multiple 5,000 square foot tenants, the building will be moved around, shifted, uh, to again, look like it was built over time and not appear as one giant building, appear as several smaller buildings together, maybe. Uh, and mixed-use buildings shall have no more than 25% on the first floor dedicated to residential use. I kind of covered that. Uh, and then, I think that's how it would apply to the single-story, but. So if we allow single-story by special permit, when they adhere to the design standards, and maybe we show or they express hardship due to the use or something of that nature or due to lot size-
Yeah, so-
-as a condition of the special permit.
Or just the usage, really.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be hardship.
So I, I think you make a, so one of the, your, your points here, I think, is that we have a lot of useful guidelines and standards here that are going to help ensure that even a single-story structure meets a lot, if not all, the goals and objectives of the district. It's going to meet many of them. Um, so, so I guess one thing I would, so, and you were just talking, and you just made another point that I thought was interesting, which was, you know, by a special permit and maybe with some condition. And I guess for me, like, like Matt, I'm not that crazy about it. I'd almost, part of me would like to see the site have the opportunity to not necessarily get the first use, but the, the best use, but that said, I'm open to what folks are saying and I, I understand, you know, we have, the town does have, you know, budgetary issues and that's, that's, so I guess where I'm going with this is, as far as the special permit goes, one condition that I'd be maybe interested in seeing is, you know, um, you know, it's allowed by special permit, if it's in, I guess, some clause like if, you know, whatever, if it's, um, there's a compelling public interest for allowing it. In this case, there's a compelling public interest is the reuse of the site. Um, I would prefer it not just be the default option. I mean, the, the reality is, we've put a lot of standards and guidelines in the district, so even the by right stuff, a developer is coming into the district, you know, hopefully it's, we've made it easier by having a lot of by right uses. A developer can have a plan and come in with confidence that they're going to be able to see their project through understanding our guidelines and accepting them, that they'll feel confident that they can fairly quickly build what they want. I guess where I'm going with this is, for a large project, though, there's going to be some scrutiny in, involved in this and then the APD process. So I'm not even a special permit process if it's just unconditioned. I mean, special permit process does give everybody in the town the opportunity to come and, you know, give their two cents, and the use can be denied. There's plenty of reasons here to allow for denial of a special permit. But I guess what I'm saying is, I'd be willing to support something like what you're saying. I think, you know, maybe, you know, like Matt, if we really do want to see the density and I don't want to, I won't get off base and talk about the density right now, why that's important, but, um, I guess my only point is, I agree with what you're saying. I think you make some good points, but I would want to see the, uh, special permit, a little more guidance in the special permit for the ZBA as to why, why are we allowing the special permit in this scenario? And for me, everything I've heard from the proponents here, it's about the public interest, especially around like the Passios lot. Or the public, could be public interest around a private lot, you know, it's just some use that's very compelling and just, you know, we have an oversight, you know, there is some use that's, you know, roller rink or some, I don't know, I don't, historic roller rink, I don't know, you know, I'm, that's a bad example, but where, you know, somehow we missed something, but, um-
Well, I think we kind of covered that in, in the approval criteria A, right? So the whole idea is that, that the use has to be aligned with the intent of the bylaw and promote the purposes of the, of the village district setup.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that over time, people, you know, when past the moment of discussion, they forget that, I guess I will talk about density. I, I think density is really important to this, this, this thing, and you might, people in Lunenburg might be like, "Why are they talking about density in Lunenburg? I mean, I came to Lunenburg to get away from density," or whatever. In this particular small region of town, I think that, one of the reasons why the state model bylaw and why we are going for density is because, uh, it creates, it, it, it creates a natural presence of people in an area that can help sustain businesses. Other people go to visit them, they see that part of town.
Right, but, but to that point-
Yep.
-if your goal is density-
Yep.
-and someone wants to put in a, um, a single-floor structure for senior housing that, that promotes the density of the area.
Not as much as a three-story structure for senior housing with an elevator, but it's better than having it live fallow as well or in, you know, a state of disrepair.
I also think that if you want to add a condition about, you know, the public good and a compelling use, compelling today and compelling in 25 years are going to be very different. So all of this is going to evolve over time as the town changes, as the people in the community change and the people making the decisions change, so-
As it should.
A, a, as it should, and I'm not saying that, that, that's wrong, but the interpretation of whatever language you put in here is going to, to be altered. So if it's a matter of, you know, trying to add an additional criteria for the, the single story, I, I think, I, I think Ken's right, that everything that's in the special permit criteria sort of outlines all of that. If there's something that you think is missing, I think we need to look back to the preamble and the purpose, and that, that's where, you know, these rely on going back to that and going forward to the design standards. And so if, if you think that there's something that's not getting captured, then it's, it's failing in those other two portions of the bylaw.
I think it's captured. My concern is people making the connection, and I'd just like to maybe draw the connection in the special permit to say, say, "Okay, we allow single-family, or, sorry, sorry, single-story by special permit." Um, you know, there needs to be a compelling reason to deviate from our goal of high, whatever, higher density.
And that's kind of the definition of special permit in general. It's, it's, it's subjective.
I get that, but my point is this, I just want the person making that decision to make the connection. I could totally see myself before entering this process not making the connection, like, "Why don't we allow, um, you know, a single story?" So I just want them, as they're reading that, is they're about, is they're looking at why they can have a special permit, to see that the reason why this is by special permit is because by default, we want multiple-story for higher density. I just have, as someone who served on boards and had to wrestle with things I didn't participate in writing, I just want that connection to be crystal clear of the trade-off they're making. I don't mind them making the trade-off, I think it's good that, I think people have made a good case that there's reasons why we want to allow them to make that trade-off under some circumstances, but we want them to understand which trade-off they're making.
So I appreciate the discussion that's going on, and it's a struggle that zoning has. To go with what the reuse committee is trying to do is to have some certainty for the developers, and anytime you interject a special permit, that's one more hoop they have to do. I think that your board struggled with that with the permit regarding solar. And that, as somebody said earlier, if you look at the square footage of the lot of the Passios, you could add on page four, you have prohibited newly constructed one-story buildings except for single-family homes or buildings on a lot exceeding 200,000 square feet or whatever, five acres, you know, whatever the thing is, then you, you come up with a standard, and oh, by the way, the only lot that's going to work is the Passios School, which already is a single-family stu, uh, building, which is not consistent with Lunenburg or New England architecture already. So if that were the case, you've created a standard, not required a special permit, and actually allowed it to go through. The concept, anybody can make an argument for the good of the town. And so how do you say, "No, we don't agree with that"? And so if you're trying to do the development, do it, say what you want and be there. One other comment, uh, several people have said, and I support the concept of economic development, but it's not going to reduce our taxes. With under Prop 2 and 1/2, this would be considered new growth, and therefore we could tax more for the new development. Our taxes don't go down. The town raises more, may avoid an override, but anytime we do economic development, it will not reduce our taxes.
Yeah, thanks, Brooke. Again, this was not a major economic development package we were planning here. This is mostly quality of life stuff. We hope to address our other commercial bylaws later. This is wholesale economic development is not the main goal of this particular by, by law.
True. No, I think, I think, I think part of the building reuse committee, in this case, there is like avoiding, uh, some fees for the demolition of the building, which are probably in the neighborhood of half a million to one and a half million dollars, so there's that. But yeah, that's a great point.
So what I'm hearing correctly, we could allow for special permit on lots over a certain size to have buildings of-
You could eliminate the need for special permit and just say, "On a lot that's-
Lot layer.
-greater than-"
Six acres or whatever it is.
Sure. I mean, they're, they're talking approximately 10 acres at Passios. So if that's the one place you want to allow single fam, or a single story, or you think that single story's appropriate on that lot, then-
No, no, six and a quarter. Six and a quarter plus one acre from the Brooks house, so they'll be lucky if they get over seven.
Yeah, it's not-
Oh, I thought that the, um-
Well, it's to be decided.
But I thought that the, the ballpark on, on the sketch they had was about 10.
And they had the, and they had the, the property line through the TCP.
Yeah, I think they gave us a lot smaller than 10.
It wasn't very well thought of.
So it's to be decided, but it's going to be at least six, I hope, probably. But really hope it's going to be at least six.
We don't really want to structure this special around that one lot, though.
I kind of do.
Um, it, it's an opportunity.
Rebecca Landry from the Historical Commission. Because I'm in the medical profession, um, most assisted livings are multi-story. Life Care of Leominster, Life Care of Acton, Life Care of all, is the biggest developer of these things and they're multi-story, but it is with an elevator, and so therefore it doesn't have that upstairs-downstairs feel for the, the tenant. There is another, more than 10-acre property that is in your APD, and that is the open parcel be, on Leominster Road, that's behind the, um, where the person has a sawmill. That's 17 acres.
It's not in the district.
It, it, the district, I understand, goes down as far as-
No, they can only enjoy the, the, the ability of the district for 50 feet outside of the district.
Outside the street? Well, thank you for that.
More restrictive.
Okay.
Um, so I, yeah, just one other comment on single story. I underst, I think this has morphed a little bit since it was originally written, and it says now, "Volume should have prohibited newly constructed one-story buildings except for single-family homes." My understanding was, single-family homes was more for existing uses, so I guess I'd rather see that one under the existing prior, I'd rather see, single-family homes existing prior to 1 May 2015.
Yeah, I thought we said that.
Well, that wouldn't, they wouldn't be newly constructed then, and you could-
Or sorry, except single, except, sorry, newly constructed, it says newly constructed, oh, I see, one-story buildings, oh.
So if they were existing prior to 1 May, they would be existing.
Uh, newly constructed one-story buildings, whoa, wait, so, no, but exempt, single-family-
That was here when I got here.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, so-
So I, I, my, my understanding is the discussion originally was single-family home prohibition, just outright, and there was some concern that, uh, existing homeowners would be not in favor of that, and that there needed to be a vehicle to, uh, provide some comfort that they would continue to be illegal use and that-
We left it on there, highlighter, and actually no one has expressed concern about it.
And that someone may wish to build a single-family home in the future. Uh, how the ability to build a one-story, single-family home got included, I, I wouldn't venture to guess.
Yeah, so let's not worry about the history of it, but I think, I mean-
I think it morphed over time.
So you really just want to strike it?
Yeah, an inaccurate meaning.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I would suggest is, is when you wrap this up, if you, when you're making a recommend, or when you're voting on this bylaw, that whoever makes the motion include, uh, the striking of that wording.
Remove C1 completely.
4175, C1. I would say just, well, that's up to you about the single family. I think Nathan's talking specifically about the except single-family homes.
I thought, my understanding was that we're going to change it to existing building reuse rather than except single-family homes. I thought that that's what we were changing it to, unless there was something else that we changed it to.
No, I thought that that was for number two.
That was to, addresses existing buildings.
And we can't prohibit one-story buildings if we're going to add a special permit.
Yes, so if we just strike that, except single-family homes, existing single-family is still allowed because it's not newly constructed building. Okay, yeah, so we can probably, yeah, okay. Um, all right, so as far as the, so where are we landing as far as this other discussion goes about single story? And so, uh, Mr. Ebersol says he, he, there's two kind of things. One, one request was allowed by special permit. The other proposal was, uh, sort of create a- The other proposal was sort of create a, you know, poor man's overlay district inside of the Village Center District here by use, I'm just joking.
Using the language of lots over a certain size, which we know there's only one.
Yeah, exactly. I kind of feel, I mean, part of, so I understand what Bob's saying, and Dave's got a thought on this.
You know, I think I mentioned to you at the beginning that if you're going to go with a single-stair, a single-story building, lot size is everything, so if you have an area that just doesn't quite make it for the parking, that's an excellent opportunity for a single-family, a single-floor building for commercial.
He's talking about a small lot.
Or it's an opportunity for the...
I agree with what Mr. Ebersol said. I mean, I wouldn't determine it by special permit, determine it by size of lot. That would solve a lot of problems when it goes out to RFP. That's a great solution, I think.
Or they could also, with a small lot, they could, they could exercise the off-site parking agreement within 1,000 feet. So I mean, we facilitated for that.
So if I am reading this correctly, or understanding correctly, we could take, under special permit, no, under C, so C1. The following uses are prohibited in the Village District. Newly constructed one-story building stays except for lots over five acres.
With the exception of on lots over, yeah, whatever size you choose.
Okay, so some, a proposal we can make at the end.
If, yeah, if someone wishes to include that, I would, I would include it as part of the motion.
But that's the place to do it.
Correct. No, I guess I would hash that out and have the discussion while the hearing's open.
Yeah. So I plan on making the proposals that we change C1 to the following uses are prohibited in the Village District. One, newly constructed one-story buildings except on lots over...
Five acres.
Five acres.
That sounds good to me. I mean, I like the fact that it kind of keeps it, if we put it in the special permit language, it would apply everywhere in the district. And so there's kind of a, achieves two good things here. It supports the place where we think we need it the most, and it maintains sort of the ability to achieve the goal for the rest of the district.
And then, because it's only one lot, really, right, it's only one lot, Matt, over five?
Looking at that right now.
That one over off a Mass Ave by the power grid might be...
Let us know what you think the appropriate threshold is and... We got Matt fact-checking the lot sizes over here.
Aside from TCP, there's only two over five.
One of those might be one of the ones that has the frontage cut off outside of the district. So you're going to be limiting this to potentially three parcels within the district.
So what would, what size do we have to go to make sure it's only the Passios?
Well, if you, if you look at lots that are over three acres, there's nine of them. And when I set these numbers up, I included these three large, I included the school parcel, this large parcel that we just spoke about, and another one off a Mass Ave that's only, it's just in access to a large.
So there's really only one over three acres?
No, there's, there's six over three acres.
How about over five?
Including TCP. And it looked like there were only two over five.
That's fine, in my opinion.
So is everyone else amenable so far to that proposal?
And then there also exists the potential for people abutting each other to combine their lots to create a larger lot that would facilitate...
Could.
More incentive for existing living, existing residents to take advantage of the bylaw.
Again, that's going to be existing buildings and probably not going to be allowed to be demolished, so...
Two, two-acre lots could combine to make a four-acre lot, and they could build a campus.
Campus, yeah.
With their two existing homes and additional buildings.
But it still wouldn't be a five-acre lot.
Is that required for the campus?
That's what I'm, that's my proposal for the, for the one-story thing. I'm still talking about one-story.
How many, how many buildings are there within this district that are only one-story?
Couple.
There's, there's Skills and Thrills, there's the TCP, there's...
The Church Community Center, there's the church itself.
Do they look like they're one-story?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, you know, the majority of our, or a lot of our existing businesses are one-story, as you just mentioned, you know, the post office, the library, the bank, they're, they're one-story buildings. And the bylaw as written prohibits the idea of a facade that makes it look like a two-story. So the buildings that we have now, which are, which are encompassing our commercial enterprise, wouldn't be allowed in the district you're talking about. So if you look at our existing businesses, many of them are one-story.
I'm sorry to disagree, and I certainly don't want to seem argumentative about this, but the building that you just mentioned, for one, they are new buildings, they're not historic, and for two, they do look like two-story buildings. I understand that, I understand that, but...
Okay, any other, so, so I'll come back to the board to further just, you know, kind of wrap up, because we've had a lot of great discussion today, and make sure we are on top of that before we close out. Any other, any other new points or any, any of these points that people would like to expand upon?
One more little, just housekeeping on the signage on page seven. Section eight, for our letter eight, section C. 5% of the signage on the facade, I would just look at that, is that the total facade? For example, I'll pull Mr. Nekwak's drawing here. Most of them say 5% lease line, so how would that work? Is it 5% of the total? So if this is four businesses, but you got a 30-foot front, is it only five feet? Most architects, as you know, look at it, they have 10% allowed in the front.
Yeah, I would take the whole front facade of the building, that whole...
It's 5% of the whole front.
Of the whole...
Of the whole mass, not just that front, not, not just the first floor that you're seeing there. Take the mass of the building.
Well, I'm just going where, I think a little bit of clarification there might be. Unless, if I get these two stores, I'm allowed to put a sign there, right? Out of these four stores.
Well, I pictured that as one store, that's just multiple signs for the same tenant in that particular graphic.
So if you have two tenants, for example, would it be 5% of the lease line? Usually it's so much percentage of lease line of the outside, so if you have...
Yeah, I think we were going for, was there another point that said...
Signage is very important when this goes out to an RFP, so I just want to make sure it's, and I think the signage bylaw is good, what you have written, it's just, what is it that I'm allowed?
So what do you think the area that, that whole, the mass there, with that facade, that face of that mass, with those faces of that mass in that direction would be about 600 square feet?
Well, this would only be maybe 100 feet, 200 feet long, 100 feet maybe?
No, that's not 100 feet long, that's small.
Okay.
Probably 50 feet.
50 by 20, or what do you think, going up there?
I mean, the math may work that way. I would just kind of detail it out when it goes out, because that's very important to retailers.
So in that example, you'd be able to get about 50 square feet of signage in the current?
Well, if it's 12,000 square feet, then it's 1,200, and then it's 600 square feet of, 5%? Is that what you said?
No, it's not 12,000 square feet.
If it's 50 by 25 feet tall?
No.
Okay, 50 by 20, that's, that's a thousand.
Yep.
So then it's 500 square feet for signs.
That's what I'm saying.
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty square feet.
Fifty square feet, which is not a lot.
So there's no height restriction?
This is...
And then evenly distributed...
Each building facade facing a street or parking area is permitted to have signs that equal a maximum size. So it's not addressing a specific tenant, that just amounts to the maximum amount of signage per that, per that frontage, and it'd be up to the owner of the building to divide it between the tenants.
Right, so I mean, if I take over 50 feet of that, I'm allowed 5% of that 50 feet, which is 250.
That's essentially, on that structure, or that picture, it would be a one-foot sign size that could go the entire length of the frontage of the building.
Okay, like I said, I know that the, if I was a landlord, I would at least set out and say you're required to have X amount, usually it's sized by height, not just 5%.
But I think you also give some flexibility by not dictating lease line, because you could have somebody who doesn't necessarily need signage, or doesn't need as much signage. If you have a retail operation and a attorney, or, you know, somebody who sees people on appointment basis, they, you know, as long as you can identify where they are, they're not necessarily...
Or you have your anchor tenant and then a subsequent tenant.
True, but it really doesn't matter, the bylaw would go for everybody. If I was opening up an office and I know I have 5%, that would be up to me. But if it's standardized, I think when it goes out for an RFP, but there's, I mean, I think it's an excellent bylaw, except...
Yeah, the way I view, the way I view that one anyways, was that the building itself has an allotment for that particular facade. If the building owner had two different tenants, they would decide the ratio probably, tied directly to their square foot uses, not so much the facade.
Number nine actually eliminates that.
They have to be even.
And as a retailer, this is where I would take advantage, if you have a facade now, say it's 10 feet high. Right, but if I'm a developer, I put in a 20-foot facade, just giving you an example, you know...
You'd have to, you know, do something with your roof line to meet the design standard.
What I'm saying is, there's usually a size and height requirement to make them all standardized.
But I think, Dave...
It does say that. Number nine says, a building with multiple businesses shall have signs of equal size on facade. Signs shall be either rectangular or oval shaped.
Right, but what's, what's dictating that, that signage?
You're taking the 5%, and then you're dividing it equally amongst your tenant spaces.
But 5% of the total square footage, so that would dictate height and width at the same time. That's what I'm saying, you might want to spell out a little bit, 5% total width and height.
Well, he's got 5% of the area of the facade, right? So it's like, so you got basically 50 square feet you could do, you know?
Because it's not supposed to be a rectangle anyways, it's supposed to be articulated. You would have someone trace the perimeter of the facade.
What I'm saying is, if I was looking at that as a developer, I was like, okay, I got 5% this way, so I can go anything I want, so 5% square footage would solve that, answer that question.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Okay, saying square footage, yeah, okay.
He's saying it's not, it's not clear what the 5% indicates.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So the maximum...
Just add of the facade's square footage, yeah.
Or say, yeah, equal a maximum square footage of 5% of this facade area.
Square footage, yeah.
I, I see another ambiguity in eight is the, you speak about the building facade facing a street or a parking area is permitted to have signs that equal the maximum size of 5% of the facade.
Yeah, so both...
So would that be one or the other, or the combined?
Both. Both facades could have their own signage adding up to 5% of their own size. Again, the side of the building probably not so prominent on the street, so it's fair to say that they can have their own signage there, because it's not going to be obtrusive to anyone on the street.
Then it maybe shouldn't say or, street or parking? Maybe it should say street and parking? In number eight?
Well, but then if you add, if you change or to and, then I would, and somebody...
Doubles.
What's that?
Potentially doubles.
No, it means that in order to have signage, you have to face a street and parking. Street or parking says that if you face the street, or you face the parking. If it says street and parking...
No, 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 no. It said, it's a facade that either faces the street or the parking area is allowed to have signs, which also implies that both can have signs.
Yes, what he's saying is if you change it to and, and it said, each building facade facing a street and parking area...
No, you don't want that, because we're not going to be able to face a parking area on the street.
That's, that's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The way it is with or.
I think it's right the way it is. I think we should just clarify with the square footage around the percent.
So just to, just to put this into perspective, square footage...
I guess I would... The respective facade.
Yeah, square footage of the respective facade.
Maximum area of building sign. Okay. In retail-commercial district, it's 24 square feet. So Damon's building there, what do we talk about, might be 50? That would be double what's currently allowed in retail-commercial district.
Well, no, it wasn't completely, it's not complete, it's not a, like I said, not a rectangle of 50 by 20. The first floor was, yeah, maybe 50 feet long. The second floor was not 50 feet long, except it back, so it's less than that.
Yeah, well, at any rate, I mean, I think, I think our current signage bylaws probably consider too restrictive anyways, so I guess, now, it's, it's still way less than what's allowed in commercial, which I think is a good thing, which is 220 square feet. So that's like, you know, the front of Walmart or something, which, you know, we, we don't want anything that scale, but... So you're somewhere in between retail-commercial and commercial, I think, with the signage, which...
Do we want to set a maximum size per sign?
Again, that's why it's based on the size of the building, so bigger buildings can have bigger signs, but...
I think it's great, his formula with the percentage. I guess my reading on this is probably that's, his 5% is a pretty good number, is my initial...
Yes, not even mine, this is, this is all from the state, I believe.
Oh, really? Oh, good.
I didn't make that up. I don't want to take credit for that.
Well, and if we're talking about altering it to make it clearer, if it were to read something like, each building facade facing a street or parking area is permitted to have signs that equal a maximum square footage...
Yep, of 5% of the...
Yes, of 5% of the respective facade.
Yeah.
With a, or we could even go with a maximum of...
I, I'd rather, I guess the con...
Because we don't want billboards.
No, but the mass of the building is broken down, so the primary facade is, will be broken up and not that large, you know?
Yeah, I don't know what the biggest allowable building is, I mean, I guess, you know, I don't know. TC Passios were three stories high and you had...
And larger buildings are going to be required to have multiple tenants, which is going to start to break the signs...
Reduce the size.
Size down, because it's required to be equivalently split amongst tenants.
And then, then we have all kinds of other design guidelines on the signs, and, you know, they have to be frontlit. And I think, you know, I think the limits to the, there's some limits curbing the beast there.
And 50 square feet is not even that big.
No.
And that's, I think, large.
Well, especially when you look, I mean, if you look at, take the pizza place on the corner, Village Pizza there, right, and you look at the sign they have to share with, there's like 10 tenants in there, and they're all sharing a five-by-eight sign, a 40-foot square sign. Because there's so many tenants, you can only see like, you know, they each got like a license plate.
And again, it's not going to be a billboard, it has to be affixed to the facade of the building. Can't be like a real signboard stuck up there or anything like that. Most, and all kinds of other requirements as far as it being lettering and a quality material and...
Yeah, and they still have to meet, I mean, they can't displace windows in a manner that's going to make it not look like a New England building, and they still have to hit their glazing requirements. Well, that's only for Village, the campus, I guess, but...
Now, hopefully, if they put glass over the sign, though, it doesn't count as a glazing requirement, does it?
No. Ass over the sign, I... There's...
Would hope not.
How about the sign on the edge of the arm, and does that count towards their sign? Square foot of juice?
It does.
Any other public comment? Well, okay, so given that, I can turn to the board, and if anyone from the public gets inspired, feel, please feel free to come up to the mic and we'll, we'll recognize you. We're going to just kind of review some of the things that have been brought up today and make sure we've, I think we've covered a lot of them, but just make sure we've, we've gone through it. So I think we've, we've talked about the single-story issue and that, and that, there's a proposal on the table for that.
Why don't we start at the beginning?
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion, first off. We've got this, we've got some, some points highlighted in yellow that we, that we'd hope to discuss at town meeting. Is that, is that the case?
No, but at this setting, not at town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great point. So the first one is in 417-2. I'm assuming that one you're just going to fill in, this one here is just going to get filled in with...
Yeah, that's just going to be a date. That'll be a date for...
Before we move off to 417-2, do we feel that the preamble and the purpose adequately addressed the density goal? Would we want to add more detail in there about the density goal?
You have, under purpose D, talks about density specifically.
That's the only one that does.
A, talks about walkable neighborhoods.
Yeah, intensive mixed use is talked about in the preamble. It's not so, I think the wording of the preamble and the introduction, I think...
So do you think it's adequate then?
I think it's adequate.
For, for being able to use that as the approval criteria?
As long as people review it carefully, yes, I think so. I think, you know, my concern about the, the single-floor thing has been addressed by the proposal to deal with it on the large lot sizes. That'll kind of, it kind of constrains the impact of the clause and... But thanks for, for bringing that up.
I agree with Nathan. So the next highlighted one would be single family, single family under use provisions, under special permit. Single-family homes, so we're talking about, under special permit, new uses, so this is a newly constructed building, classifying single-family homes by special permit. Do we want to allow it at all? Do we want to... we want to allow it at all? Do we want it under special permit? Do we want it, we don't allow it by right because of what I said before about we don't want a developer coming in and putting, hey, a bunch of single-family homes on a lot. But do we even want to allow it at all? I think is why it's highlighted. Or are we looking towards density and wanting duplexes in the case of a newly constructed building?
As I recall, the concern there was that people being concerned about having single-family homes becoming non-conforming and having problems.
But Adam has expressed to us that it's not going to make them.
That's right. That's not, that's not an issue. That's just a misunderstanding.
So let's bring up, so this is a good conversation. Let me, let's bring up a scenario I think Troy raised at the beginning of the meeting, just so we all understand. So if you take the corner house, that is, that has been used as a retail space, I would say for the last five to 10 years. I don't believe it's been occupied as a residence for five years at least, maybe a decade. Longer than two years, certainly. Let's say we didn't have the special permit clause. What, let's say someone wanted to reoccupy it as a residence. How would that work or not work?
Currently, once the zoning is passed.
If the zoning passed, yeah.
It would be a use variance at that point.
So they'd come in for special permits, make it a house again?
No, they'd come in for a use variance.
Okay. And how entailed is that process?
It's the same as a special permit process, but it's an actual variance.
Okay. So.
There's a higher bar to reach. It's not subjective. It's a size, shape, soil, topography requirement. And I believe the town's bylaws allow for use variances. I haven't come across.
So it still allows someone to take that building and make it a single-family home again if they really want to come before us and do.
Yeah, I'm not sure also how the zoning board looks on use variances currently. And now, I guess, if the commercial use has been abandoned for a period of two years, and it has reverted to residential use at this time, and someone were to come in within the first two years, the building inspector could make an interpretation, again, this is my interpretation of zoning, ultimately the building inspector interprets zoning. So he could make the determination that it's still a residence because it hasn't been abandoned as a residence for more than two years, and that's what the zoning was. You know, if this passes in May and someone came in in May of 2016, that's been a year, he could make the determination that it is still a residence and that all they need to do is a special permit for continuation of an existing non-conforming use. So I think there's a process in any, in any scenario where they would go most likely to the zoning board to present their case and have a.
Let's say that three years has gone by.
Then I believe it would be a use variance. If those are expressly allowed under the protective bylaw, which I'm recalling a conversation that I had with the building inspector, and I believe that they are, but I'm not going to just clear that definitively. If they're not, then it would be prohibited.
So just to be clear, I'm not, I wasn't interested in changing this. We're just talking about things we highlighted. So as my own opinion, I'm fine with the way it is now, given the highlight.
Yeah, I might, I might be interested. I wonder if we conditioned it with single and two-family homes in an existing structure with a previous history of residential use.
No, this is, this particular line is to protect against housing developments or tract developments. That's why it's there.
Well, that, special permit, we struck it from prohibited access.
Oh, okay. Single and two-family home, except.
Oh, I see. No, no, I got you.
I wanted to restrict the special permit to, I wanted to, yeah, basically have those be a prohibited use except for the special permit.
Which they are right now.
Yeah, but it's, okay, so I'm trying to make, I'm suggesting we make this more restrictive so that we avoid the tract homes and the things we're trying to avoid. And the reason we're, just to be clear to everybody, and why we're, why are we trying to prohibit single and two-family homes in the new Village Center District? The reason is because the new zoning guidelines for the district have dimensional standards that are far smaller than anywhere else in Ludenburg. I think it's a fair statement. And could allow for someone to build, without clauses restricting single-family, single and two-family home development, could allow someone to build a very tightly clustered development of single home, family homes, which might be fine in some locations, but is not in keeping with our goals for the Village Center District in terms of encouraging mixed use. So we do have other residential uses. We have, there's a lot of opportunities for residential development on mixed use, where you have businesses underneath and residences on top. There's an apartment complex by special permit. But for the single-family homes, we're trying to not have that be a major feature in terms of new construction in the resident, in the Village District, so that there can be an opportunity for this other kind of mixed use development to get a foothold there. So anyways, I don't know where we're at with this. I guess I was saying, I, right now, any single or two-family home is allowed by special permit if this were to pass. And I guess what I'm suggesting is, if our goal really is to protect home, existing homes with a history of residential use, maybe we could narrow the special permit down to only apply to those. And that would head off any concern of misuse in terms of new development.
So reuse of single and two-family homes?
What's that?
So reuse of single and two-family homes?
Yeah, basically.
Rather than new, single and two-family homes?
Or reuse of structures that had a history of residential use. So that would include, for example, this corner house.
Let's say.
I think if you just leave the use as it is, you kind of, you don't pigeonhole yourself and it makes it less confusing and less cumbersome as you, as you go forward. I don't think that, I think that the amount of people who are going to want to build a new, single or two-family home through a special permit process in this area is going to be limited. I think the majority of your single and two-family homes are going to be reoccupation of those that are currently in that, that realm. I think a lot of the parcels that you can build on will become more attractive to people who want to do a mixed use, whether it's a personal mixed use or somebody who's doing a minor development.
Okay. So we highlighted it, so we talked about it, and we talked about it, and we're going to leave it?
That's up to you. I'm, I'm providing my, my opinion.
Is there a way we could put clauses in there that, that indicates that single or two-family homes have to adhere to the other?
EPD.
Pardon?
EPD.
Uh, no, not just that. We already say that for everything, but the other offsets and so forth, as opposed to the Village District offsets.
Oh, there you go, residential A.
If you do have, well, you know, let's say you have a relatively large parcel, a single-family home on it, and you don't want to have your in-laws live with you, but you want to subdivide your lot and build them a house next door. If you, as long as you were able to adhere to the standard offsets and dimension, dimensions of the lot, you could, you know, you could do that, and you'd have another single-family home on an adjacent lot. But what we don't want to do is allow single-family homes to be built on these really tight lots. So is there a way we could word it that way?
I think that once you start getting into splitting.
Yeah, it's kind of, referencing in Residence A zoning could get a little frightening. You're kind of opening up a gateway to another dimension.
Well, I.
I just, I mean, that's our intent. This is what we were trying to do, right?
Correct.
The whole reason for putting it here was to inhibit anybody from coming in with these nice new offsets and putting in a ton of houses right on top of each other.
Yeah.
Right? Because we don't want that.
Right.
But we don't also have gotten feedback that having clauses in there saying, you can't have a single-family home in the Village District is bad.
I don't think we got that feedback yet, did we? We were just concerned about.
We did get that feedback, and that's why we put it there originally. Right? Because it originally was just, we said, no single-family homes, it's prohibited, can't happen. And our initial feedback was negative on that. I mean, going back months.
Someone with a comment.
Hi.
Yes, hi. Bob Dolittle, Lemstar Road. Actually, there are very few probably Form A or compliant non-conforming lots now currently, right, within this district? But if there are, if there's a currently conforming lot, the use would be changed by this.
Be grandfathered.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, could you?
If you had a currently conforming, buildable lot that was not occupied.
Yeah, you would be existing non-con.
No, if you were existing conform.
Existing conforming, okay.
If you actually, you're talking, Kenneth mentioned like a lot that was actually subdivided.
Okay.
But let's say it was already subdivided legally. It's a legal Form A lot. How would this be changed by?
So you had a lot, it was currently eligible for a single-family home.
It, without any.
But there's nothing on it now.
When, when was the Form A completed?
Three years ago.
Okay, because there's a three-year freeze on Form As. So if somebody came, let's say November, before this had really, and I would have been underway, and they did a Form A, that would be, that zoning would be frozen for a period of three years. And if this passed in May and they were, you know, their brother was moving back from, you know, Sheboygan, and they wanted to build the house, they could build single-family by right because they're, they're considered to still be under the Residence A zoning if they choose to be. Once you get out of that three-year window, it just becomes a legal lot that now is in the Village District and has the Village District zoning. So if they keep the special permit, it would require a special permit to build a single-family home.
But if it was Form A previously, it, I mean, it's currently a buildable lot.
Correct. It would continue to be a buildable lot. It would just be.
So you can't change, you can't, a currently conforming lot will remain conforming for residential use?
Well, it won't, but it won't be considered residential if the Form A is older than three years, once this passes. Because it's saying that the.
So it needs to be renewed.
Single-family is now a special permit, not a by right use.
Okay, so it would need to be renewed.
So you'd have to file a special permit.
Correct. But you could still build your house there.
Or could you renew the Form A for another three years?
No, he could not renew the Form A. I don't believe so. If it's already been, if it's already been divided, the lot already exists.
Right, yes.
He could theoretically.
See, I understand the spirit is to not now allow denser, single-family construction. I certainly understand that. But if you have a property that already conforms.
Do you have a building permit on the property?
Don't have a building permit, but, but, you know, we've legally subdivided it, so.
Correct.
It has frontage and it has all the, you know, set back requirements and everything met, so.
Yeah, like I said, I thought the intent of this was to, was to restrict these, you know, houses that were tightly packed, not this use case.
I mean, I think something like that would reasonably qualify for a special permit. It's not the intent, by the way that it's written, to prohibit someone from building that home, but more to make sure that they're looking to build in the character of what the bylaw says and what the area is, as opposed to squeezing them in and building, you know, a mini Levittown because they have.
Sure, I certainly understand that, yeah.
I think your example is the reason why the special permit is there.
That was exactly the type.
Yeah, but, but a special permit doesn't mean it's allowed. It simply means it's a possibility. And that's obviously a big.
Right, but the criteria that we use for, right? So if, if you're building a, a single-family home, it's two stories, it matches the New England style, it passes the architectural guidelines, then that, that meets the criteria.
And this bylaw is intended to be established as of 1 January 16. So you would have up until that point to still be in the Residence A and acquire a building permit. And as long as you act on that building permit, I believe it's six months, within six months of obtaining it, it continues to be active. So you, you know, once you have a building permit, you're legally conforming. You may be a, an existing non-conforming use, but you would continue to be legal.
And one more comment is, in the allowable uses, there is a home, a mix, so you could have a, a living space on the second floor with 25% living space on the first floor and a bed and breakfast. So, I mean, from my experience on the other side of this table, there are always kinds of ways that you could get around specific things.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's an example where an existing resident, a clause like this does.
The problem with that is it's not an existing building. And, and all of our focus has been on existing homes, not existing lots.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but the spirit of that example is, I think, a perfect example of how our bylaw right now would work in the residence's favor in the way that we intended it to.
Yep.
So I, again, would propose no change on that highlighted line.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And, you know, to the point of purpose, I mean.
Yeah. So while we're up on the single and highlighted line, we're just going to add in single-story structures as like 11 or something on this one?
No, I was just going to add them at all.
Oh. We're not adding any special permit for that?
I think we can just deal with it in C, because really, there's nothing prohibiting single-story structures except for C1. So we're just going to refine the prohibition based on the lot area thing. And I think we're.
Okay, so we won't do a special permit here?
Not for that particular site. So the only other highlighted item is what you just mentioned under C, number one. Again, I'm going to propose that we reword that to, "The following uses are prohibited in the Village Center District. Newly constructed one-story buildings, except on lots over five acres in area."
How about just say on lots under five acres?
Oh, yes, lots under.
Just kind of add the double negative in there.
Right, this, that was teed right up for him. He's a software engineer.
Well, hold on, wait, wait. You've both said two different things. Damon said over five acres, Ken said under five acres.
They said, don't say except, right? Newly constructed, wait. Newly construct, what's prohibited is newly constructed one-story buildings.
Oh, on lots less than five acres.
Under five acres.
Okay.
That's fine, yes.
So.
So if I have five acres, I can make a one, one-story, single-family house.
Little home on the prairie, yes.
There you go. Great use of that Passios property.
It's my first house on Roosevelt Road.
Get a big, build a big fence around it to keep everybody off.
Keep those kids up in lawn.
So just to reiterate, that leaves the TCP and two other properties within the district that are eligible for that.
I thought you said they didn't have access to one of them anyway.
Hmm?
The other two sites?
There's one that's six point, there's one that's 6.9 acres, and there's one that's 7.19 acres.
Are they both on Mass Ave?
The property that the post office is on and, where's the other one? Not quite sure right now.
Well, the post office is already occupying that one story, so I'm not worried about that really.
I think the other one might be Mass Ave on the west edge of the district.
Do we need to make the acreage higher to make you feel good about it?
I can, I think I can live with that.
I can live with five, I mean. Okay, I'm done on that one. What's next?
All right. Anyone else going? So, so Mr. Ebersol raised a couple of things. One was the minimum lot area. I'd be curious what Adam's thoughts were on that.
I mean, we also have a minimum 75 feet of frontage, right?
Yeah, and.
Talking about doing an A and R to make another lot. It's not, I don't think we see many lots with over 150 feet of frontage.
Well, if I think, if I'm interpreting what Mr. Ebersol said, I think that the concern comes from taking a current 40,000-square-foot lot that maybe the building addresses the street at the front side. street at the front side, and it has, you know, a decent amount of open area in the back or somewhat wooded area, and the adjacent lot or, you know, the lot on the backside of it needs additional land, and they take a 40,000-square-foot lot and make it 10,000 square feet, 'cause, yeah, we're okay with that, and they're gonna pay us a lot of money for that other three-quarters of an acre. And then somebody who reasonably assumed their neighbors aren't going anywhere, they're gonna continue to live in their house, now has commercial parking or some other, uh, use associated with a business there that is maybe looking at the map, not what was intended, but allows someone to create that use. Is that, you know, you could do that through a Form A. I don't know how many people may or may not do that. If somebody's deciding to move, maybe they do that as part of, you know, okay, we're gonna be moving, we're putting the house on the market, let's sell some land, 'cause this guy really wants it, 'cause he wants to put in, you know, whatever he wants to put in back there. Um, you know, 40,000's a pretty decent lot size. It's a, it's a good size. Uh, you know, I think that the spirit of the Village District would be downsizing that anyway. Uh, you know, if you really felt that that could be a problem, you know, you, you may want to look at cutting the Residence A size in half and using 20,000, but-
There's so many quarter-acre lots that are in the district.
Well, and I, and then I guess that's the other thing, is what's the, you know, what's the, the smallest lot size that's prevalent? And then maybe you mirror that so that somebody can't create a 5,000-square-foot lot, but 10,000 would, would match up with some of the other lots in the area.
This building's probably on a 3,000-square-foot lot.
Yeah.
The L and M gas-
If you're lucky.
Yeah, but it doesn't have parking.
Yeah, L and M has .19 acres.
Some amount of infill development anyways.
The, uh, the L and M gas station has .19 acres. It's pretty small.
It is small.
I mean, in that case, example anyways, that's back lot, that'd be off the street, wouldn't be-
I, I don't necessarily think the, the no-lot requirement is the worst thing. I think that if the board shared the concern or felt like they wanted to address it, you could establish a lot size based on parity with what's in the district currently.
.19 acres.
Tom Hall's .15.
I, I'm comfortable with it at, at none, just in this, again, splitting hairs between .15 or, and, and nothing is-
.27, .25.
I mean, the, the ability to, to sell, say, a sliver of land to your neighbor to make it usable, to make projects work, I don't think is a bad thing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're selling it to your neighbor, so hopefully you're okay with it. And, uh, again, there's plenty of time for your neighbor to comment and-
Yeah, and I don't know that it's necessarily the person selling it that the concern would come from. It would be the person on the other side or the person buying it, so they know about it.
Again, I'm, you know, I, I think, I, I think it does help with infill, which would, to make projects successful on land that would otherwise be not used. So I, again, would be, I'm fine with a no-lot size, or would be happy to see a no-lot size.
Yeah, given, I guess, what's there and what the goals are, I think it makes sense as well.
And also just to bring all the non-conforming lots into conformance, yeah.
Any other thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, another comment on that is if, if someone has a lot that, um, they have a proposed use for it, and they go through the calculations and they figure out that they could get what they want on that lot, using, only using three-quarters of the area, then that would allow them to not only build what they wanted to, but also sell that extra quarter of the lot to an adjacent property owner who maybe doesn't have enough.
Again, it's working with your neighbors, so-
Exactly, exactly.
Not a bad thing.
It's what we're trying to encourage.
Yeah, in, one example, it could free up parking, you know, you use what you want, you sell the rest, so, and a decent lot, you have parking behind.
Another example is, it could be a 1960's building on a lot that is not in the greatest shape. It's not gonna, it's not gonna trigger any of the, uh, the APD stuff, so they could just tear that down and put a parking lot on it, and then lease those spots to new businesses that don't have enough spots they need to make that arrangement with for parking.
Well, I think you need something, 'cause we don't allow just parking lots in the use, right? Someone couldn't just knock down the building and just put a parking lot, they need some use.
I don't think they have that restriction, do they?
Um, not sure.
It's not allowed by right, parking lot.
Well, if the fellow, if, if the person was doing it, was leasing-
Unless the town does it, that would be a civic use.
Unless the town does it as a civic use.
Or if they were leasing the spaces, it could be a retailer or commercial use.
It's a retail.
Yeah.
For a parking attendant stand.
We need more parking.
Twelve square feet.
So I, I think we're all in favor of keeping that as is. Mr. Ebersol brought up another topic, which is building in front of the, of the building. My hope is, he brought up the example of-
Infill in front of a building with a fuck-
Because of the, the reduced setbacks, yeah. Um, I have, I suspect that that's a case where the APD would provide some, some level of protection, although it gets to the site, you know, if we're really talking about this governing more of the site relationships, then the question is, would our design, what would our design standards have to say about, about that type of situation?
Like we said, it's a campus, right, so that, that's building a campus, isn't it?
Well, let's say, yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess so, I mean-
Unless you're extending your-
Unless they had enough frontage that they could cut the front off, yeah. Otherwise, it would be a campus, and the campus does have a good thing, good site design principles built into it.
Yep.
So the campus, so the only way they could do that would be is if they had enough frontage, they had 75 feet of frontage, that they could still split that off.
But they'd need to provide frontage for both buildings.
For both buildings, that's my point.
And generally, if you're going to provide frontage for a building, it's going to be in front of the building.
Yeah.
Did we specify that in the campus? The frontage applies per building?
No, 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 no. I think what he's saying is that the campus covers the majority of, has decent site design guidelines for campuses.
Right.
If they were going to do an A and R-
Oh, so, yeah.
-and divide, then potentially they could build in front of, but I think that there'd be some offset in front of-
Yeah, no, you mean-
-as opposed to building directly in front of.
There's only two or three lots there that look like you could even, could even build in front.
Yeah, either way, it's 50 feet of frontage.
Yeah. And, um, what's the other thing they would need? Uh, yeah, and if they did it as an, so if they, if they did it as an addition, it'd be an alteration that would be clearly covered by the APD. So the only way that would be able to, to possibly try to squeak by as if somehow both structures were able to have lots with 75 feet of frontage.
That could happen, right? That, that could happen.
It could, not likely.
Uh, okay, and then there's design standards B1. All buildings shall have principal facade and entry with operable doors facing a street or open space. So that would kind of probably put the kibosh on that as well. Buildings may have more than one principal facade and/or entry.
And I think that's one of the really old buildings.
I don't know, so I think it's a, I think it's a great example to, to bring up. I think we're pretty well mitigated against that. Is it possible someone could do something gross?
There's a lot of creative people in my industry.
Yeah.
Unanticipated consequence.
He also brought up the whole subdivision thing, you know, creating a, how would subdivision laws operate in the Village District? So if someone could-
Subdivision of, subdivision laws operate the same in all districts. So if you're creating roadway and lots, well, if you're creating roadway in itself, um, your lots need to meet the required lot size and frontage and other dimensional requirements of the district, and then the roadway requirements are laid out in the subdivision rules and regulations and are standard throughout all districts unless they're divided up separately in there.
So I think the thing about the subdivision is, let's say someone did do that, it's a great, great scenario. Um, I think the big thing would be, well, you got your subdivision, now what are you gonna do with it? Well, presumably, you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, if you wanna do like all single-family houses, you'd have to do a special permit for that. Um, so-
Yeah, and, you know-
I'd say, where?
Well, and I think that what you'd have to do is you'd have to come to the planning board with the special permit in hand for the single-family homes for all of those lots in order to do the subdivision.
Right. So in that sense, I mean, a sub, if there was a place, let's say they did the subdivision in this seven-acre parcel off of Mass Ave, and then proceeded to populate it with mixed use and whatever, I mean, that would be, that might be fine, you know?
Yeah.
That, basically, subdivision, subdivision doesn't necessarily change the equation a lot, it's really the-
No, it's the creation of roads and lots.
Yeah. But it's a good point, because what's, the point taken is that with subdivision, they could create a lot of lots with 75 feet of frontage and no minimum lot area. But 75 is not an insignificant amount of frontage. What's it now, 150, 200?
You could, you could take a single lot.
100.
It's 175.
300 feet.
Okay, so 75 is still nothing to sneeze at.
I don't see any subdivisions happening in the center of that.
No, I, it's very unlikely.
Yeah.
Unless it were a commercial sub, I, I think at this point, it would become a commercial subdivision.
Yeah, maybe on the old Passio site, if they knocked that down, maybe on this site off of, I don't know, I'm familiar with the topography and conditions on this site off of Mass Ave, but that would be- Okay, so, um, Rebecca, would you like to?
I just want to have this clarified. So you're, what you're, are you telling me that if you're on Lemmester Road and you're a house that sits way far back off the road and has a considerable amount of frontage in front of it, that you can't put a business in between it, in, in front of it?
You can.
You would be able to put, well, if, so you're talking like, what's your current setback? Like 300 feet, 200 feet?
You have a house that's probably, I don't know, 700 to 500 feet off the road, currently.
Yeah, so you-
Does the district cover any lots, those houses that far back? I don't believe it does.
How far?
700 feet from the road.
Yeah, we don't go that far down Lemmester, but hypoth, I don't-
See, it's in your, in your-
We do go down Lemmester, but I think it's, we're, what's, almost, she's right, 'cause we go pretty close down to West Street, like halfway to West Street from the-
Right, you're, you're gonna hit this property, I think.
So, yeah, I guess, I mean, they, is, if they maintain 75 feet of frontage, they could either, they could-
Can they just put a driveway to get to their house in the back? And then sell off all the rest?
What?
'Cause they've already sold off half of it.
If they're in the district, yeah, they could sell off a chunk of it. If you're talking about the farm parcel?
No.
Okay.
I'm talking about on the house after, um, the Cunningham house.
Yeah.
That, that house has-
Yeah, they could turn, they could turn their property into a hammerhead lot and sell all that frontage property as buildable.
Does that have 150?
They could, they could do that now for residential development.
Right. And they have, in the past, sold off a portion of that original parcel.
And once they've done that, it could be built upon with building styles appropriate to the district, meeting the zoning criteria laid out here. So I'm not sure it would be a bad thing. It might be-
I'm not thinking about a residential lot, I'm thinking about a commercial piece of, a commercial, uh, property.
To like put a doctor's office or-
Yeah, and so people who are in this, you know, exclusive little residential neighborhood suddenly have a business.
Again, the property you're talking about, the house is only 300 feet from the road, not 700.
Okay, so it's 300, but is that still possible?
And there's barely enough frontage to do two lots there. So if there were to be divided like you're speaking about and put something in front of it, it would certainly be a small something, because there's not enough room between that building and the road to do a significant structure.
But a lot of the, any of those lots that have a large front lawn setback-
There's not, when you say any of them, I think you mean that one.
Well-
Because there's no, really none in the district that we've laid out.
What about the one right next to the Ritter?
Right next to the Ritter?
Yes.
Setback from the road, the Cunningham house? No.
No, Mahollan's house.
There's not enough of them to put something in front of that home.
You can't put something in front of that one.
They've only got 104 feet of frontage.
And not enough frontage.
Okay.
You-
That, that, I just want to clarify in my mind that that-
No, it's, no, I understand, that's a good, good thing to ask. I mean, I think there are some cases where, where they, you will be able to-
But this one.
-divide out parcels, and in that, Damon thinks they could get one, and-
I don't, yeah, you say there's some chances, I don't, I think there may be one chance.
One, one lot, yeah. And that's part of the intent of the district, that's how you get increased density in use. It would, yeah, it would start to change the patterns of activity in the neighborhood, to your point. But that's part of the, the reason for the zoning.
You know, I don't, there's, there is, there's actually nothing in the architectural, uh, preservation district that prevents the subdividing of the lots, right?
Well, you can't prevent subdividing of lots, it's a, it's a, it's a right, it's a property owner's right. I mean, you can't take property owners' rights away entirely.
Yeah, the, the lots could get reconfigured. That parcel she's talking about could subdivide and sell it to the neighbor, who maybe has a little extra space on his side, and they, he could subdivide a, you know, larger lot, and they could put something in.
But there are lots with significant front, there's a few with some frontage, so you could do this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so it's getting late, I kinda wanna see if-
Our bandstand, we could go.
So I think we're near the, in terms of the feedback, the two pieces of feedback I have that we haven't discussed yet were Ms. Lantry's comment about, um, in her, you know, her preference would be to see the district restricted into the, in the Mass Ave corridor. Does anyone have any comment on that?
Uh, we went back and forth on the size of our district. We already reduced it under Adam's suggestion, down to a considerably smaller space. Again, trying to create a walkable area. Uh, I think we selected an appropriate size for the scope of our district, and to accomplish the goals we talked about, and create some great opportunities for people to start home business and what have you, and bring a lot of non-conforming lots into conformance, I think we have the appropriate lot or district outline in my mind.
Thank you. Any, any other comments from the board or the public?
I entirely agree with what Damon just said. We did spend considerable amount of time going back and forth and making it smaller, making it bigger, uh, making it different configurations. Um, I, I think it fits well. I mean, if you look at the, the streets that come through the town center, they're kind of in a star pattern, and it's not really quite a star pattern, but, I mean, it's pretty, pretty much centralized on the intersection, which I think is the goal, the focus.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I appreciate the, I think we've, we all appreciate the sentiment of taking it, it's slow and whatnot. Um, I, I agree with what they're, what they're saying. I guess, I mean, I'm also a resident of Main Street. I think, I, I think, as they, as Damon said, it's a pretty, pretty concise area now, and I think it actually is gonna offer a lot of positive things to areas like Main Street. I don't, you know, and even parts of Lemmester Ave there. Uh, I have higher hopes for the preservation of the, of the buildings in the area, not just because of the potential passage of the APD, but also I think, you know, this, the rezoning in the district will provide some of the economic vitality needed to provide homeowners and business owners with the incentives and-
Financial means.
Financial means to keep those structures healthy and vibrant. Um, so, I mean, I honestly haven't seen the near fate of the Jones house and the primary school and the Brooks house. I feel like the area needs a shot in the arm to, to stay looking good and to continue to thrive, and so that's why I see this as a real opportunity to sort of secure our heritage in addition to, you know, providing some exciting places for people in the town to, to gather, and hopefully, hopefully we'll see some fun places to go, come in in appropriate ways. But, um, but no, I think that's, the, you know, the caution is something that, you know, we've been trying to balance throughout, and it's, it's, it's good that you, that it's brought up. Jamie, last comment I have notes on, and you guys may have other things, so don't, don't rely on me for, for all this stuff, um, is he had a comment about, uh, separating the APD from the Village District. um, is he had a comment about, uh, separating the APD from the Village District. He had some, some, uh, some thoughts on the APD, which I, I guess I won't get into unless he wants to bring them up again right now or you want to get into them because the APD is kind of a separate thing. But, um, any, anyone want to have any thoughts about?
Not to put words in his mouth, but I think this concern was not with how our bylaws written, but how we presented at town meeting.
Exactly.
And, um, myself, I share his concerns. I feel like we spent a lot of time on this. Even the Historic Commission say they felt a little rushed with theirs. We do have the clause where we are essentially waiting for them to come into effect before this one does, right? We're gonna.
Well, it's, it's a date specific.
Date specific. But at any rate, if they needed a fall town meeting to rework their bylaw to fit ours, I don't see why we couldn't have the town hear them individually on town floor and have them be counted under their own merit. Even if that one got voted down and ours got approved, they could still come back in the fall and get something that the town may like better.
Well, to be clear, I think that there'll be separate articles.
Yes, but we had said earlier, we wouldn't.
Yes, you, you had made that.
We would withdraw ours if that didn't pass first. I, I don't agree with that. I feel like we spent a lot of time on this. I like the idea of letting the people decide and if the people decide that this one's ready and that one's not, then so be it. They still have time to come back and correct the Protection District before this comes into effect. And I think that would be the more responsible way to do it in my mind.
And I think that that's up to the board. I think that the discussion up until this point, the majority of the board had at least said that they feel the APD was an important part and I think that that was sort of the genesis for, for the original comment. Um, again, I, I'm going to support whatever the board moves forward with.
And to emphasize, I still believe that Protection District is an important part, just whether or not the wording is correct and ready for this town meeting is the question. Um, so again, I would like to let them rest on their own merit at town meeting. That's my opinion.
Do you guys have any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I think decoupling them is, is probably not a wise thing unless we can somehow create structure in this document that pertains to modifying existing structures that, um, that, that's not allowed until the APD exists. But how can you refer to something that might not ever exist? And that's why they were kind of coupled. Um, 'cause if, if this stands on its own, and, and just as an aside, there's a good chance that this would not be able to stand on its own because enough people would be fearful of losing the historic nature of the, the center of the town if this passed without the APD, that this could essentially get voted down prematurely.
Again, you're putting, kind of putting words in the voter's mouth. You don't know that they.
I'm not putting words in their mouth. I'm just discussing the possibilities that that could happen.
There's a likelihood, yes.
I know that I would have a concern personally about the, the character because we, we did talk about site design and, and architectural design a little bit, but certainly not to the level that, that APD is. And we didn't cover anything about demolition in here. So, all we have right now is a brief demolition delay before you could level a historic property to build something in the Village District. And so, I would be really concerned about passing this through and potentially allowing that and, and then saying, oh, it's, it's APD's responsibility to come up with a piece of, of, uh, come up with a bylaw that'll pass town meeting before this goes into effect. Otherwise, hey, you know, case or a, sirah. So, I, I think tying them together is still a good idea.
How about we exclude the, um, the potential for homes over 75 years old to apply for the Village Center District? Is that possible? And then if in future APD comes online, then they can provide that avenue for the 75 or older homes?
Uh.
Because this does not.
I, I, you know, that's not a question I think I'm, I'm comfortable answering without doing research because you're talking about an arbitrary inclusion of property and, you know, the district goes from a boundary to a, you know, sort of a, a scatter shot of, of properties that's a constantly moving target because every year you're adding, no, maybe not every year, but you're consistently adding more, more properties to, to the district.
Built prior to, it's just a date.
Yeah, but then what are you restricting? You're restricting the property? You're restricting just the structure?
Yeah, I, I think that there's some legal complication to that and I, I've never had somebody ask me to do that so I, I couldn't speak to how you can do it as part of zoning.
That's, that's my concern is that it doesn't provide enough protection for historical buildings.
Yeah, so I, I agreed. So, I agree with, with Ken and Matt. I mean, if the AP, I think Ken made, just Ken and Matt make two good points. And I think your points are, are good as, as well, Damon. I guess I don't feel comfortable, we, we are, everything we've done in terms of the aggressive zoning to support the vibrant development has some really positive things. On the flip side, it creates some amazing incentives for demolishing existing structures. And if the APD had nothing else, it promises strong demolition protection. And I think that's, it, take everything off, soft that, out of it, I mean, don't take everything else out, but even if you, we need it at least for that. The other thing is we've already started to migrate some of our design standards from this to the APD. So, I think, I think that was a good decision. I'd prefer to stick with it. Jamie made some, you know, I think some good points have been raised by Jamie and by the board before about figuring out how we're going to strike the balance in terms of, um, having an efficient process for approvals for projects. And I think, you know, I think us, the Historic Committee, everybody wants to, to figure out how to do that. That's something I would feel. More comfortable fine tuning at fall town meeting. You know, I'd rather, you know, get, get the VCD in with, with maybe a little bit funky APD that needs a little work, but does clearly protect demolition.
My question to you is what are we going to do if, if the APD doesn't pass?
If the APD doesn't pass, then this is not the right formula. This, this formula depends on something like the APD. So, if the APD doesn't, if people really want the Village District as construed, I strongly suggest they support the APD because the two, you don't, you don't get all of historic preservation and this type of development.
That's not how you write laws. You can't, you don't present to people, you can't have this unless you do this too. I mean, I think, again, I wasn't saying no APD. I was saying if the APD doesn't pass this may, give them time to pass one that the town is okay with.
Yeah, I'm not gonna personally, I can't support that because of the risk I will have played a part in introducing to the destruction of the historic town center.
But this bylaw still won't take effect until one, a real APD gets passed.
No, there's, there's no guarantees then.
It's a date.
Because a, a real APD might never pass.
Then the town didn't want it, so they wanted this.
Well, if you want.
That would be essentially the town voting that they wanted this without an APD. And I'm not one to sell people what they want.
Well, I was elected to the board. I guess no one was running against me, so it wasn't a real tough election. But, uh, but as a representative of the town of Lunenburg, I, I can't, I can't, uh, personally, I mean, you, you guys can do what you think is best for you. For me, I can't be part of setting in motion that kind of situation where we've put, we've created greater peril for the historic buildings of the, the Village Center. And that's the real, the status quo is we don't have a great demolition bylaw, but we also don't have very much incentive for people to demolish things in town center. What would change with the passage of the Village Center District bylaw would be, we still would have a weak, a very weak to nonexistent demolition prohibition, but we would have strong incentives for demolition and significant change in the district. So, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't be part of that.
So, I said, maybe, maybe the, in, there's, I mean, if, if I think about the way that you're putting it, Damon, it's, it's basically an incentive for the APD to construct a.
A, a good bylaw.
A good bylaw that would definitely.
Because right now, I'm not sure it's gonna pass.
The trouble is that that introduces this, this potential risk. So, would, would, could we possibly pare the APD down to, um, a, an initial pass where its primary initial focus is really on, um, preventing demolition? And then defer a lot of the other, um, pieces of it to, um, to further, uh, what do you call it, amendments? So that, so that it, it is easier to pass.
Accomplishes the goals.
Accomplishes the primary goals of the Village District, prevents demolition of our historic buildings, which is what our primary concern is. And then, um, and then in, in the future, you could, um, give it more teeth, so to speak, as, as you had originally desired.
The way, I can't.
But it's kind of positioned in a way that it can essentially block the, the Village District Center, right? So.
Yeah, I'm not, as, as it's written now, I'm not in full support of the APD and I don't want to ram that down anyone's throat just to get the Village District passed.
What exactly are your exemptions to the APD? What, what is, what is your, this is the feedback that we want too, is, what, what don't you like?
Well, again, we just got today the updated language.
And, and the other thing too, this evening, you people have made multiple changes to your own document. So, the excuse that we are still shifting documents is not.
I'm just saying that I can't fully comment on the document right now as I got it when this meeting started realistically.
I'll tell you what, so here, here's the thing. So, I think, so I think there's a lot of support for many elements of the APD and, as you know, you guys have just gotten pulled onto this recently and we still have a little bit of time left to discuss it and we will have meetings where we will discuss the APD in more detail. Regarding the board and this question of how we're going to move forward, we don't need to decide that definitively. No, tonight. Um, but it's good that we started the discussion, so the public's aware of the discussion. This is a good opening up a discuss, further discussion about the APD. Um, so, just for purposes, tonight's getting late. We have a few more items we need to cover and we need to have a deep discussion of the APD, which we're not going to probably be able to have right, right now because of the, the time constraints. So, if it's okay, let's all regroup and Adam and Marjorie will set up, make sure we get set up with an agenda item to, to meet with dual meeting to further dig into that. So, so if it's okay, we'll, we'll table that topic for the moment.
It's fine tabling it and I assume you're going to vote for this, but I'm very concerned that the, that this is not going to be a joint effort and that if the APD is not ready for primetime, this is not ready for primetime.
All right.
The fact is demolition of a building is, is a problem. Demolition by renovation is a problem. That's what would happen if you don't have the bylaw that they've come up with, which basically was the bylaw that you had the other day, that the things they had, they expanded the definition of demolition by neglect. They expanded some other things. It's not substantially changed from the last time. And I, I'm disappointed that what I thought was an understanding from this board was that you weren't going to go forward without that part. These are part and parcel for the center of Lunenburg.
I, I have to say that I support both of these. Um, I think that, you know, it's important that we protect the center of Lunenburg and as Mr. Ebersol has said numerous times, there could be unintended consequences. And I think that adopting the Village Center District without adopting some type of, of APD would be a mistake. I think that if this board even is considering that, at a minimum, you need to incorporate, and I don't know if this is possible, is incorporate at least some protection from demolition or, or demolition by renovation into your own bylaw if you're not going to stand together. If there are concerns about the APD and, and I would encourage a hearing on the APD so that we can hear about concerns. Um, and I know time is getting short, but I, you know, this has been a great forum. I think you've gotten a lot of feedback. I think the Historical Commission could get a lot of feedback on the APD and, and flush out any issues that are going to be raised on town meeting floor. But I think it's important that we maintain the goals of the APD in adopting a Village District.
And that would be, that would be my recommendation is if the APD does not pass, that we withdraw the, the Village Center District. And then if there is, I'm not sure that there is even a fall meeting planned, but if there is a fall meeting, that we could possibly combine the two. If they don't, if the town does not want the APD, then we need the protections that are afforded by the APD for the Village Center.
Okay, so that's, yeah, really good conversation. Um, we'll take some action items out of that to, as discussed here. If, I'll take any last public discussion on the Village Center District bylaw or comments before we move on to a couple of the other topics we have for, for the evening.
Sorry, just one more comment. Uh, just to make it clear, the Passio School is not covered by the APD because that's less than 75 years old. So, that redevelopment is not subject to the design guidelines.
Um, I'm sorry.
No, last I saw, they had to say over every property in the town and then within the district.
Depending on the proposal.
Again, this is a different topic than what we've been talking about now, but.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's, this highlights the importance of having a, another pub, you know, visible public discussion where we can hash out the APD together.
No, I'd definitely like to have it flushed out as possible in public so it's not a surprise to people in town meeting that this is the APD. If you want the Village District, vote for it and they don't read it.
No, that's a great point. That's a very good point as well. Absolutely. All right. Um, so.
What's that? Did we wrap this up?
We, I'm about to, yeah.
Okay.
So, so we're going to move off of the Village District bylaw and talk now about some of the other changes we have. We're going to propose a town meeting. Uh, this next change is to add to section 3.1 of the town's existing bylaws. Uh, the section is entitled Types of Districts and a new subsection will be proposed, which will be 3 dot 1 dot O, to read as follows, Village Center District. Just to be clear what this is, this is a section of our bylaws that lists all the types of districts in the town. The Village Center District would add a new type of district, therefore we need to add the Village Center District to this list of districts. Any, uh, any public or board discussion on that topic?
To be clear, it's really just housekeeping that goes along with.
Correct. There, there's a number of, of, actually, there, there's two others that we'll, we'll talk about tonight that are housekeeping that goes along with that.
Okay, and, uh, in section 3 dot 2 dot 1, um, we're deleting the words "May 3rd, 2008" and substituting the words "May 2nd, 2015" to "immense." And that, the purpose of that is, again, housekeeping in order to reflect the fact that we're updating the Village zoning district map to include the Village Center District. And then there's another amendment to section 4 dot 1.6. Um, we're going, the section on registered marijuana dispensaries, we're just going to be correcting the numbering sequence there, nothing else. And that's all for that one. Copies are on file in the Planning Office. Any board or public discussion on any of these sort of bylaw, housekeeping items? Okay, so that brings us to the end of our public.
Oh, sorry, I missed a couple of things here. Just this one, just the zoning map.
Another, another item that we will be bringing before the town is an article to see if the town will amend the zoning map to show the new delineation of the Village Center District of the town. That obviously relates to what we're doing.
Jesus, does we continue this or close this public? It's up to you. You know, I think if. Well, if the, if the language that you have for the Village District is where you'd like it to be, that's what the public hearing is for, is the language of the Village District. Your strategy as to approaching town meeting conjunction with the Historic Commission on the APD is not part of the public hearing. It's part of the public hearing, but it's not the intent of the public hearing. Uh, so you can continue to have those discussions without it being part of the public hearing. That, that's more about your intent and the way that you'll conduct yourselves at town meeting should A, happen, B, will or won't happen. Um, the other portions, I would suggest closing the other portions because those, you know, there, there isn't a lot of discussion about that. You've, you've sort of, that's what they're going to be.
Right.
I, I don't think that there's a necessity to keep the Village Center District hearing open, uh, but I, I don't think. open, but I don't think continuing it to the next meeting would be, you know...
What's the date we need to have it submitted for warrant?
It's due at 4:00 p.m. on May 23rd, or, May 23rd, March 23rd.
That's our next meeting, you're saying we're having a public hearing?
Correct, but, you know, I can submit it, and it is substantially correct, if there is some issue that you alter a comma here or add a word there, and you, we bring an amended copy to the floor at town meeting, I don't think that that's going to completely obliterate what's in there. The, the meat of the district bylaw is not going to change substantially.
So I guess a formality question is, can we actually have a public hearing for an article that we've already posted by 4:00 p.m. on the warrant?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, there's towns that don't include bylaw language within the warrant, they say to adopt, and, you know, you show up and here's the language, what do you think? I mean, it's...
I'm glad we're not that town.
I mean, the preference would be to give them the language beforehand, because it makes it easier to adjust, people can ask questions, there's, you know, some familiarizing yourself with it, but it's not a necessity.
Thank you.
So the question I have is if we close, let's say we close, so I think your point about closing the other items is fine, closing the warrant on the VCD, so first of all, let's say we were, let's say we were to meet with the Historical Committee next week and discuss the APD. We haven't closed the hearing, maybe we have a discussion, and out of that discussion, we decide to sort of reconfigure the distribution of labor between the Village Center District and the APD on something, I don't know.
That's much more major of a change than I was going to make.
I was going to say, if that's what you're going to do, I'm going to request that you pull the article, because I'm not going to have a reasonable amount of language returned for the 23rd, nor would Town Council have the ability to review it and ensure that it's appropriate. I mean, I think that we're at a point where we're either going to put this on the warrant and close it, or we're going to say, well, sorry, guys, we can't do it this time, we're going to, we're going to come back and, you know, we're going to put our tail between our legs and figure it out.
Personally, I feel we've vetted this thoroughly, I feel like most of the conversation tonight wrapped up the major concerns, I feel like the concerns left are with the APD, not with this, and I think closing the hearing tonight, getting it finalized so people have more time to familiarize themselves with it before town meeting would be beneficial.
I think also putting a bow on it gives you the ability to focus your energy on working jointly with the Historical Commission to get the APD to the point that you feel it needs to be, and not expect them to keep coming back with drafts and saying, what do you think? And, you know, it, it becomes much more collaborative, and I think you had a productive meeting the last, last week, I think that there were changes made, I think that we had a lot of discussion, I think they really centered around a few issues that maybe weren't minor, but I don't think were structural to the bylaw, and it's now it's dialing that language in and, you know, sort of focusing the energy on, on where that language needs to be.
Agreed.
Okay, yeah, I buy that, too.
So, another question, if we closed, if we left the hearing open and we had a joint meeting that wasn't a public hearing, would we, would...
Well, you, you couldn't take testimony or evidence on the bylaw outside of the public hearing.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, so we couldn't leave it open and then have a joint meeting, and then come back the week after for continuation of the public hearing?
At least not that you deliberated.
Right.
Items that you might use in the public hearing.
Which I think we're probably going to, right? If, if that was the case...
I would certainly encourage you not to.
Oh, well, no, I mean, the whole, the whole premise of it is the content of the...
Yes, I, I...
So, I mean, how, we're going to sit there and look at each other?
I'll bring a hammer and I'll hit the table every time you deliberate.
No, I'm in favor of closing the public hearing.
Okay.
We need to make those amendments that we talked about through...
Uh, yeah, you know, I think that, let's just be clear what the two amendments were, they were the striking of except single-family homes and replacing on lots less than five acres, and then...
Single-story.
What's that?
Single-story buildings.
Correct, on C. 1, it's striking except single-family homes and replacing that with on lots less than five acres. And then on 4.178, C. 8, it is striking maximum, it's striking size and replacing it with square footage, and then adding in of the respective facade, or changing, adding respective after of the and prior to facade.
So, can I make a motion to...
That's it?
Modify...
Well, we got to close the public hearing first.
Would we close it first, or we can take the motion first?
You make, you close the public hearing, which takes testimony away, and then you, you vote.
Okay, so a motion to close the public hearing on all of the topics tonight, including the VCD, 3.1.0, 3.2.1, and 4.1.6.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, entertaining motions to update the language of the VCD.
So is it fine if I say you're...
You, yeah, you could, you could, I mean, you can take each warrant article individually, or you can take them as a package.
Okay, so let's, let's take the Village Center District, so entertaining motion to approve the Village Center District.
With the changes?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the Village Center District bylaw with the amendments just outlined by Mr. Bernie, to 4.17.5, C...
Add in this typo, too.
C. 1, and...
Scrivener's errors don't count.
Boom?
Scrivener's errors don't count.
Okay, great.
Just some...
So why don't we repeat them, just so everybody's real clear on what they are? The one was on the square footage of signage, was that the?
Yes.
And the, which, which, which number is that?
4.178, C. 8.
Okay, and then the second one was, uh, 4.17...
7.5.
5, C. 1.
As described by Mr. Bernie previously.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Aye, that's done.
Need a motion for the...
The other one, so a motion for 3.1.0 to add the Village Center District to that list of other districts in Lunenburg.
Motion to approve the change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion regarding 3.0, section 3.2.1, delete the words "May 3, 2008" and substitute the words "May 2, 2015."
Motion to approve the described change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, entertaining a motion regarding 4.16, correcting the numbering in the registered marijuana dispensaries by law.
Motion to approve the described change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I believe we, oh, and, do we need, oh, on the, okay, entertaining a motion to approve, to...
The amendment of the zoning map.
Approve the amendment of the zoning map.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think that completes that agenda item. So, congratulations to the town and the board on, you know, getting to that point. Still, still some, some, some work to be done, but...
It's been a solid two years, so now...
Yes, and, and it's been great having all, all the input, and it's not over yet.
And again, I look forward to working with the Historical Commission, achieve an APD that works for everybody, and get these bylaws working together.
Yeah, so let's talk about that, so when are we going to meet with the, so we don't have a meeting scheduled for next week?
No, and, you know, we had intended to meet with the Historical Commission tonight to discuss APD, and it was sort of folded into the agenda, and, you know, clearly, we could keep going, like, we're, we only have a couple of...
Our attendance is waning.
Yeah, I was going to say, it looks like we only have a couple of stout members left from the Historical Commission who are willing to go deep into the night, but...
So, how would the board feel, would it be possible for us to meet next Monday?
I don't know, would it be possible for you to meet next Monday?
That's Town Caucus, I believe, is not...
So, no.
Yeah.
No. Well, when is the, if I'm, Ms. Lantry, when is the next Historical Committee meeting?
Not until April 6th, it'll be April 7th, excuse me.
Hmm, how about next Tues- Tuesday? It's not going to be able to be televised, because it's during the Selectment Meeting, but...
But it would give you the opportunity to have the discussion and sort of hammer things out.
Yeah. How do you guys feel about next Tuesday?
I will be unavailable.
I will be unavailable.
Next Wednesday?
Building reuse committee meeting.
I'm unavailable on Wednesday evenings.
Yeah, unavailable.
Next week? Oh, so it's not available at all next week?
I mean, we could do it on the 23rd, I think the issue is then submitting language to, we could, we could put text in there, it's then submitting altered text to town meeting. I mean, I, I don't particularly want to do this, we could do it Thursday evening if, if anybody's available.
So, as far as articles, I believe with the town moderator will allow amendments on the floor, ideally, it's, you want to get it done for the 23rd?
Yeah. But can he deny amendments on the floor if town meeting votes to approve them?
Yes, he can.
He can?
And he has, if it's substantially changes.
Right, but if the intent is substantially different, you won't allow it.
If it's minor changes...
I was going to say, who interprets intent, because...
Well, I think the intent between the two boards, if they're this far apart, and if you change something from one to the other, that could be a substantial change. If you delete something, a clause, it may not be too bad.
Okay, I mean, I, okay.
How about this Thursday?
I think I could do this Thursday.
Oh, it looks like the Historical... It's Tuesday, uh...
You mean tomorrow? We can't do that, we don't have posting time.
Meeting.
Um...
Now?
Now?
That's...
We don't have much, you still need to read the, Saturday? Weekend workshop?
I have a wedding to go to in the afternoon, but if you want to wake up first thing in the morning.
Oh, my God. Uh, Saturday, at what time do you need to be wrapped up?
Be enraged by 2:00.
I don't think I'll be here this weekend.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, this is not looking promising.
How about...
You said we can't do Thursday night?
Uh, Ms. Lantry can't.
Oh, I can't either.
How is this for a proposal, is there any, is there a minority of the board that may be available on a, during business hours to do this, and is there maybe a minority of your board that may be available to sort of workshop what a lot of the concerns are, and maybe hammer out some language, and then distribute, I can, I can craft it and distribute it to both boards respectively? Is that something that anybody might be able to do?
What, which business hours?
I don't know.
Oh, any, any business hours, okay.
I mean, anytime that I'm in the office and you guys want to come in and sit down and...
So you mean not a real meeting?
Correct. I mean, it affords perspective from both sides to work the language, I think that any two of the four members here are mostly understanding of what everybody's perspective is from this side of the table, and if Ms. Lantry and a selected representative from the Historical Commission can be there, there can theoretically be some reasonable discussion without violating the open meeting law and allowing us to move this along in, you know, the timeframe that we need to do it.
I guess I question whether you can deliberate towards something even without a court. That, that, I think that's, the problem is, it's one thing to discuss it, but if you're actually going to make decisions and have it, the question becomes, does the Historical Commission have a meeting that it can be then brought back to them to approve?
Oh, yeah, I would think...
For the 23rd?
Yes, I would think that that would be the intent, would be...
I'm not sure whether that's the case, so...
I've been advised by another member of my board that there are several that are available next week, so that if we can work on crafting some language, you, Adam, myself, anybody else, and get this thing close, then they could come forward with it, it doesn't require that I have to be there.
Correct.
So...
That's, that's fine.
And that's fine with me, too. So if we want to move to something on next week, we're going to bend over backwards to make this work.
Okay, so next, uh, next Tuesday, or what was the, I don't remember what the spread, what the deals were, what days work for, Matt, what days are you available next week?
Um, well, Monday, we've already decided we can't, um...
Wait, why, why can't we do it Monday?
Caucus.
Oh, it's the caucus.
It'd have to be Tuesday or Thursday for me.
Okay.
If you want me there. I would prefer Thursday over Tuesday, but either one would work.
Ken? Next Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm open next Thursday.
Let's do it next Thursday, then, and, I mean, I know you guys have been working together, I'd say, you know, you've, you've heard a lot of the things tonight, I don't know if you can reach out to some of the, you know, to whoever you think you need to get input from, but you guys can continue to evolve it, and then we'll meet next Thursday and hash it out, and then hopefully be on track for the 23rd.
And where would that meeting take place?
TBD.
Very good.
I haven't been there before.
I've been there a few times.
Okay, regarded.
Is that like TCP?
6:30.
6:30 work for everybody?
Yep. Or, or 7 better?
7's better, a lot of my people are getting hungry, myself included.
7.
Call 7.
Can't make 6:30 on a Thursday, so...
All right, so 7's okay?
That's the earliest I can make.
Okay. All right, um, we have some other agenda items, I think we'll go pretty quickly, we have some minutes approvals.
Okay.
So, let me, just while we're on meeting discussing, so we got a meeting schedule here, so we just talked about next Thursday, which is what exactly the...
19th.
Thursday, the 19th, okay, we need to let Joanna know about that.
I will let her know, or Marjorie will let her know, one of the two. We have the ability.
Excellent. Okay, all right, so, all right, so we're meeting next week, we're meeting tomorrow with the Board of Selectmen at 7:30, we're meeting March 23rd, there's a public hearing for additional warrant articles, those are primarily, I believe, additional...
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping, related to accommodating the new Village Center District amongst other areas of the bylaws that reference various districts. Any questions about the meeting schedule?
Nope.
Okay, so minutes approval, we have a, we have a set of executive minutes...
Skip that one, because Joanna needs to be here.
Okay. Um, so we have February 23rd, 2015, and one for minutes and one for a high field hearing.
Yep, so motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of 2:23:15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve the high field village hearing minutes of 2:23:15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we have minutes from August 14th, 2014, Charette.
Motion to approve the minutes from the 8/14/14, Charette.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have minutes for March 2nd.
Motion to approve the minutes from 3:215.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, committee reports, MRPC Joanna's not here, Capitol Planning Joanna's not here, School Building Committee, we're... School building committee, we're meeting tomorrow. No, we haven't met since we last met. Open space ad hoc committee.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I have AGCOM on Thursday.
Open space ad hoc committee, I have not had a meeting with them since our last meeting. Building reuse committee.
Have not met recently. We're meeting the 18th, March 18th.
Okay, excellent. MJTC.
Yeah, MJTC, this is an update from the January 21st meeting that I attended, which was the last meeting I was able to get to. One of the more interesting things that was discussed at this was the RTP outreach. They presented some of the regional transportation plan updates that they were proposing and soliciting input from the towns. And so I spoke on behalf of Lunenburg there and mostly the other towns actually joined in and agreed with some of our concerns. And so they actually took our input for recommendations for changes to the plan. So the three -- the primary inputs that they took was that more chapter 90 funded funding is needed at the state level so that communities can fund preservation projects in lieu of reconstruction projects because we don't get enough for keeping the roads operational. There needs to be a better way to define where complete street projects make sense in a community versus making every road project follow complete street program design elements. So they have this model where you can get funding with these complete streets, but it doesn't always make sense to add a bike lane to a street that's not going to actually get to anyplace else where there's another bike lane. And then they actually requested the DOT consider establishing a road preservation program instead of having all projects follow this complete street program. So actually subdivide the funds that they have for the complete streets program and allocate some of it to complete streets, but allocate other funding just to allow us to have road projects that we can get funding for just for preservation of roads as opposed to anything, any special enhancements for complete streets. And so when I made those points, a lot of the other towns agreed with the sentiments and so they took that as input to -- as consideration for the changes. That was probably the most Lunenburg-centric impacts of the meeting. I unfortunately missed the last meeting, but it was a large public outreach, meaning for input again on the same topic. And so I would have probably just made sure that my same points were made. And that was at the Great Wolf Lodge and it was a big deal. I was unfortunately -- unfortunately, I was in Hawaii and wasn't able to attend it. I was considering coming back for it, but decided that I just couldn't afford the airfare. So they -- I will be attending the next meeting in March.
Thanks a lot, Ken. Okay, AGCOM, Matt?
Yeah, we have -- they have not met since our last planning meeting. Their next meeting is scheduled for March 19th at 7:00 PM.
Awesome.
Which is the meeting we just committed to?
Which is the meeting that I just committed to, right?
Okay, new business and development status reports. Town caucus is earlier -- mentioned earlier, next Monday at 7:00 PM at Turkey Hill Middle School. That's where there's an opportunity to sort of fast-track your candidacy for a town board of your choosing. Just get somebody to nominate you and get voted onto the ballot. Town meetings on May 2nd warrant closes March 23rd. We talked about that. And the other items, there's no reports. Action file, verbal update from Adam on 250 Waylam Road, Waylam Luxury Apartments.
They have filed the ZBA approval with the town clerk. I believe it was scanned and sent along to you by Marjorie.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. 36 Summer Street, Telly.
So this is a project that the ZBA has given approval for, some dimensional variation and a use special permit using the Summer Street overlay. So go team. It's the first one that's been issued under that.
First mixed use.
However mixed use it may be. And so I would expect that this board will see development plan review from this project in the future. I'll say that based on the plans submitted to the ZBA, it won't be the near future. There's some...
Will or will not?
Won't be.
Won't be.
There's some significant detail that needs to be added to the plans in order to satisfy the development plan review requirements and give everybody a comfort that what they're showing is actually what's going to go out there.
All right. We discussed the Village Center District bylaw and the APD. Scenic Road and Flat Hill, Northfield, scene number four above.
They were included on your public hearing sheet. They don't require public hearings. They will be included in the warrant submission from the planning board. So if you live on Northfield Road or Flat Hill Road, come to the planning office and or give us a call, drop an email. We'd be happy to answer any questions on what the implications to your property are, which is essentially none. It's a prohibition on the removal of stone walls or trees within the right-of-way to preserve the rural and scenic character of the road.
Adam, if you could, just for those who aren't aware, what's like the right-of-way is like roughly?
Generally, it's anywhere from 20 to 30 feet from, you know, eyeball center line of the road, oftentimes especially something like Flat Hill Road or Northfield Road, which are probably old cart paths that were created into roads. The edge of pavement or the center line may not actually be the center of the right-of-way, but it's the -- the right-of-way is the piece of land that the town owns. If you look at the assessor's maps, what you see as the road is actually the right-of-way. And if you were to look at an aerial, you'll see that the pavement is not nearly as wide as what the right-of-way is. And so what you may think is your front lawn may not be -- trees there may be within the right-of-way. So I'd be happy to discuss it with anybody.
Gotcha.
And if you want, I can, you know, write something up for you guys for the next time.
No, I just wanted to -- yeah, I mean, if you -- that's fine. I think just what might be useful actually is if you had a chance to look at some of the GIS on that and get a sense so that people at town meeting could have a sense of how far off edge of pavement.
Sure.
It's easier for people to visualize, so if you're talking like...
And I think part of the problem, especially with roads that are, and I think Matt will echo this, especially curvy roads or roads that were developed using old cart paths, what you'll find is edge of pavement may be the edge of right-of-way on one side of the curve and not close on the other. And as the road goes along, it may not be perfectly centered. It's going to sort of vary. So a lot of times, you know, people will say that the right-of-way is eight feet off the edge of pavement is if you have a 12-foot lane and a 40-foot right-of-way. So you add the two together, you're getting 20 feet from center line, so you have about eight feet. So you're going to guess eight to 12 feet from edge of pavement if it's perfectly centered and everything is perfect.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Existing stone walls, the existing stone walls, they predate the law that delineated whatever for the landholders that have an existing stone wall, that is the edge of the right-of-way, that's the edge of their property. And just for example, Route 13 in front of Walmart has a 50-foot right-of-way. So that's -- and that's a state road.
Sure.
Four lanes.
I actually would echo Nathan's comments in having some sort of map or schematic available so that when people -- and I'm a little bit concerned about the GIS component because I just know in working on the Chase Road project, the layout is very different than the GIS. So I'm just a little bit concerned about what the actual layout of the road is in comparison to the measurements on GIS. And I don't know if we have a layout available for Northfield or Flat Hill.
Yeah.
But I think that's going to be a question on the floor, is how far into this property does it go? And I know when we dealt with Lakefront relative to Emerald Place, we ended up doing a whole research and a title search on where the layout of that road was. So just, you know, if we could have some sort of clearer understanding of the potential impact to properties, I think that would help it go along easier at town meeting.
Well, technically, there's no impact on the property because that's all...
Well, just what people think is the property.
Correct. The perception of property.
Right. No, I am the perception of -- I completely agree with you, but I know the perception of property is very different than what it really is.
Yeah, it is a very powerful one.
I would use that to forward my couple of years ago comment that we really should have a road book with layouts, roadway layouts, but it's not any small task.
No. Or nor inexpensive.
No. Volunteers. I'd be willing to volunteer.
All right, Ian, so just to wrap up that, so just if folks are wondering, wondering, what's scenic road on Flat Hill and Northfield Road? I believe we already have one or two scenic roads in town. Lemmister?
Lemmister Road and Lancaster Ave are already scenic roads.
Gotcha, awesome. And the goal is if you picture those roads, it's to just preserve that kind of scenic rural quality that you associate with the roads. And it offers some sort of relatively minor protections that go a long way towards preserving that appearance. All right. So that's no report on that. Notices and communications, cover sheet scan of the board. So I think with that, entertain a motion. Oh, wait a second. We got more meetings that I forgot. So we got some more meetings. We talked about the ones in March. I didn't flip the page to the ones in April. So this, thanks for laying this out into the future. This is great, great look down the road here. April 13th, we have the high field continuation, followed by a regular meeting. April 27th, we have a regular meeting. Saturday, May 2nd is town meeting. And then May 11th, I'm assuming that's the swearing in of the new members or what is May 11th?
That's the next regularly scheduled meeting.
And the next regularly scheduled meeting, that will be with the new slate, right?
No, the election's the 16th? 17th.
Oh, wow.
Still got to show up to that one.
Oh, man.
Well, he doesn't have to.
Your retirement party.
Oh, boy. All right, well, glad we covered that.
So that meeting will be at Asian? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah. Reserve me a scorpion bowl now, please. All right, any public comment for the public we have left here? Any board comment? Any member issues? There is one here. It says number of monthly meetings.
Well, Matt's getting his trial run at four meetings in March.
Oh, yeah. That's worked out pretty well. It hasn't accomplished any of the goals that I thought it would.
On that note, I will not be able to make the joint meeting tomorrow evening, so...
Sorry to hear that, Ken.
Ken will be replaced by Joanna tomorrow night. They're secretly the same person, they're just swapping meetings.
All right. No, thanks for the heads up, Ken. Good luck with whatever you're doing. Any other member issues?
Well, I'm not sure why that was on there. Was that to talk about or was that just because I...
Yeah, I mean, you raised it at the last meeting. You asked it to be on the agenda, so...
Okay. Well...
Obviously, it is on the agenda.
The reasons that I would like, that I think that would be a good idea is I think, for one, it would facilitate shorter meetings. If we met every week, we wouldn't have to wait every other week to meet. And I think that with the less time, that we'd be more productive because as it's approaching 10 o'clock here, everybody's kind of antsy to get out of here. Not necessarily right now, but in general. I mean, when you've been in a meeting, sitting here for over three hours, I think that it would reduce the time, the length of the meetings. The applicants, they could potentially receive a quicker turnaround. They could -- we could spend more time having, well, having meetings and we wouldn't have to schedule workshops in between. And if we decided to meet every week, there's nothing saying that we couldn't meet and there's nothing to talk about and that's it. It's not a requirement of any more time commitment than we've already given by being members of the board. And then the fourth thing I think that it would help with is it would improve familiarity with what had gone on last week instead of what went on two weeks ago. Things might be fresher in our minds. It would be a regular regimented thing, so maybe terms and words and just general things would stick more clearly in our minds. I just think it would be beneficial in a number of different ways.
Matt, while I appreciate your passion for the planning board and your willingness to meet four times a month, I have to leave early on Mondays to get here to do these meetings. I can't work a full day as I work in Andover and really tough to get my week going when I can't front-load it working a big Monday. And on top of that, with other meetings for other boards for building reuse or Joanna had MRPC she goes to every month, the school building, we all end up doing more than -- we'd end up with like five, six meetings a month.
This week is...
Sending special meetings. That's a lot, man.
It is. It is. It's a big commitment we've made.
Simply not a commitment that I can agree to right now. We do four meetings when we need to, but regularly four meetings is too much to ask for me.
I would add that from the staff side of things, it's essentially going to tax the office to the point where all we would be doing is minutes, agendas, and trying to organize and keep up with the items that are on the meeting. And there are other things that go through the office, there's other things that get done. I don't know that the productivity of a weekly meeting justifies the staff pressure. And I think that, you know, tonight's a good example. A lot of times, meetings go late based on a singular item. We didn't spend three hours tonight talking about four different things. We spent three hours talking about essentially one item. And I think that stopping that discussion in the middle because, all right, we've done our hour and a half, we're done for this week, we're going to hold it off to next week, it's not going to happen. I think that what the potential is, is that it breeds three-hour meetings every week instead of four-hour meetings every other week. I think at the same time, you know, I know you work on the other side of the table at times saying, all right, well, we have got a meeting next week, so you've got to turn stuff around by Thursday. I don't know that it helps people turn around quicker. I think it gives them more opportunities to pick a meeting, but I think that there's a lot of concerns on productivity from staff side for meeting four times a month.
Can I ask a question, a procedural question? If we publish something in the agenda, are we absolutely required to cover it in the meeting?
No.
So if we approach these meetings in a little more agile sense, such that the agenda was a list of items that needed to be addressed in order of priority? And then we, the agenda would say likely we're going to cover this one, this one, but these are in the queue. And then, and we added a time cap to the meeting. So we say the meetings run from 7:00 to 9:00 every Monday and we only cover what we can cover in that timeframe, 7:00 to 9:00. Whatever doesn't get covered gets deferred to the next meeting. So we take a more agile approach, but we time-fix it so that these meetings can't just keep going on for a very long period of time. And if there's lots of people during the public hearing that want to continue talking, we just say, okay, we're going to continue this in next week's public hearing.
I think that...
Can we do that or...
Well, yeah, the agenda's reasonably what you expect to discuss at the meeting. So sure, you could put 100 things on the agenda.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting...
And I'm not suggesting you're saying that, but I'm saying I'm using a hyperbolic example. And expect to cover two or three each meeting.
What I'm more thinking is that we put the four items on there that we think we can cover, but if we only cover three, we just take that fourth one and put it as number one at the next agenda.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Now the agenda becomes a little bit easier to manage because it's more of a floating list of items that we're addressing.
Sure. I think that the -- that works. I think the point about public hearing and, you know, stopping at 9:00 and saying we're going to continue, it does a couple of things. It infuriates your constituents and it creates a potential unnecessary delay for the applicant because if you... Because if you just power through until ten o'clock, it's tough, I know. I've been here, you know, days from seven thirty to ten thirty and, you know, you're beat down at the end of the day. But you give somebody the ability to walk away and go start working on corrections to their project or alterations or ways to address concerns. If you push them off a week, that's another week that they have a delay in putting their project together and, and moving it forward. And most developers will see that as a hindrance. You're costing them money and you're making, you're difficult to work with, you're anti-business, you don't want our development, you don't want us to do this, you're giving us the runner.
I understand. I, I think project reviews can be more efficient in general.
And that's what I hope to bring.
Any project review that takes three hours, I would say that maybe you, maybe there's something wrong with the way that we're doing though.
Correct. I, I think that the, the technical review shouldn't take three hours, but as we saw with High Field Village, there's the potential that the neighborhood concerns or comment, or as we saw with Flat Hill Road, can be substantial in its volume and, and can really be the long end of the hearing.
I also just wouldn't want something on the agenda that gets people down here to the meeting.
Correct.
Because they'd be concerned about it and then we don't talk about it. That'd be heartbreaking for me if I sat to a three-hour meeting and then didn't have the topic that I was there for.
I don't know if heartbreaking's the right word. At least from my point of view.
Yeah, angry.
I appreciate your gentle use of vocabulary.
That goes into the, the whole agile sense of things. When you're trying to plan a session, you, you estimate how long something is going to take and you don't put two long things on the agenda for the same night. But anyway, it was, it was just a thought because if, if we did do a, a regular weekly meeting, time box that, and we tried to handle our agenda strategically, then we would achieve more meeting hours in, in a month or about the same meeting hours in a month and maybe be more efficient in, in how we go about doing it. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the thought and I think that there are probably some efficiencies that we can work into the agenda. I have to think about it. I, I've never found people happy with the time box in the government sense because they come in and they want to handle the business, they don't want to be told, oh, our time's up. And that's not to say there isn't a way to do it and that we can't find some, you know, way to make it work.
Wait, am I right to filibuster?
I just think that, you know, I think it's something we should talk more about and we should start defining a way to, to be a little bit more efficient. I, I would agree with that.
To that point, you know, we, we have had times in the agenda where there, there are things on, two things on the agenda that make people sit here for two hours before they get to speak about the thing that they actually wanted to talk about, which followed that two-hour event on the agenda. And if we again went to this more agile approach, we would look at that upfront and say, this is going to be a big time consumer, that should be the primary focus of the meeting. And then just take care of little, you know, little things in addition to that and take this other big thing that a lot of people want to come here and talk about and move that to the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I agree.
I'm just trying to think that we should try to do, because we have had people sit here that are waiting to talk about something and they give up at nine o'clock and they leave. Because we don't actually get to the agenda item until nine thirty because we spent two hours talking through every line of a ten-page memo that an engineer wrote. And it's just, it, it, it's, it is heartbreaking to the people that come here to talk to us about the next agenda item that they're waiting for us to talk about and they could care less about the ten-page engineering memo that we're talking about line by line.
And then I guess that goes to, does the board feel necessary, necessary to go through a ten-page memo from an engineer line by line?
No, I don't. I already recommended that we don't do that in the future.
And nor do I. I think that if you've had that memo, you've had your opportunity to read it. If you have questions on that memo or would like a highlight of that memo, I think the engineer should be willing and ready to provide that, but I, there's no need for, you all, you folks can all read. You've all been elected, so I assume.
I raised this question earlier and it was discussed about how that has to be made available to public access in the appropriate amount of time because if, if we get it late and we end up essentially reading the memo during this meeting because it wasn't made available to the public.
That's how it ends up getting read to us.
Right. And so that, that's what ends up happening is we end up reading a ten-page memo in the meeting because the public didn't have access to it in time.
Not so much recently, but.
But I mean, what?
It has happened.
Technically, it's not public record until it's submitted here and, well, we can have that discussion offline, but I, I have, I have a disagreement with that, with that statement.
I'm just trying to see how we could make it more efficient.
Yeah, I, I agree.
My whole goal here is, you know, now I've been here for almost a year and I'd like to see what we can do about, you know, adding some efficiencies.
Well, as we do some development.
If we don't violate any laws.
Yeah, as long, as soon as we start doing development reviews, hopefully you guys will get a feel for the way that I like to do them and, you know, hopefully we can find a, a happy medium.
Okay.
That will work.
But technically for the record, I do, I would support meeting every Monday. I'm okay with that as long as we time box the meetings. I don't want to meet every Monday until ten o'clock.
Me either.
And it certainly would be easier for me if we moved the meetings to seven o'clock instead of six thirty. I don't know if that helps your situation at all.
I mean, I think that's a.
When, when we're not meeting, I usually work till nine o'clock on Monday.
Oh, okay, sorry, all right.
Maybe that's a discussion we have with new membership.
I'm not willing to start at nine o'clock at night, so.
Well, it'd be ten because I have to drive back from Andover.
Any other members issues tonight?
No.
All right, well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, 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 aye.
Huh?
I had to let you get one of them.